Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the January 3, 2012 meeting of the Edina City Council and the Edina Housing and Redevelopment Authority. Roll call, please, Ms. Megan.
Member Bennett?
Here.
Member Brindle?
Here.
Member Sprague?
Here.
Member Swenson?
Here.
Mayor Hovland?
Here. First matter of business is the approval of the meeting agenda. Is there a motion to approve the meeting agenda?
So moved. Second?
Moved and seconded and we approve the meeting agenda in the form stated. Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say nay, carried. Next matter is the adoption of the consent agenda. Is there anyone on the council that wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda?
Yes.
Member Brindle?
I have item 4D and 4M.
D as in dog, M as in Mary.
Mm-hmm.
All right, and I need to move 4S. Ms. Sally? For the purpose of potentially changing the date. All right, with the exception of...
Did you say DM and F?
DM and S. Ms. Sally.
Is that covered already?
O and P, too.
O and P?
O and P, Your Honor.
All right. With the exception of items D, M, O, P, and S, is there a motion to approve the balance of the consent agenda?
So moved. Second?
Moved and seconded and we approve the consent agenda. With those exclusions, name, discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say nay, carried. Let's go right to 4D, the official newspaper designation for 2012.
Thank you. Last year, when we had this item on our agenda, and we have this item on our agenda annually, designating an official newspaper for the city of Edina, some of the concerns mentioned at that time were that some of our residents do not receive the Edina Sun Current and that Edina Sun Current is not delivered to residents who live in apartments or townhomes. And I'd like to revisit that because those are residents who don't get the benefit of being informed of our public meetings, and I'd like to see what we can do to change that.
That's a good point. I think we did learn from the quality of life survey that most people in Edina get their information from the Sun. I think it was 26 percent of the folks get information from the Sun newspaper, so I think it's worth exploring after the fact. Thanks for that comment. Would you move the matter?
I will move the matter.
All right, your second?
Second.
All right, moved and seconded and we designate the official newspaper for 2012 as the Edina Sun Current. Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say nay, carried. Next is a matter close to me, the M, the annual appointment of the Assistant Weed Inspector. All of you may not know this, but the mayor is the chief weed inspector designated by state statute, so we'd like to appoint an assistant weed inspector that actually can get out there and get after those weeds. Hurry.
The question I have about this is just that I had heard that Vince was going to retire this year, and evidently he has changed his plan, and I just want to be sure that we... do we have an idea of when he's going to retire, or is he going to be on board for the entire 2012?
Counselor Brindle and City Council, to the extent that we know or can know, Mr. Cockrell will be with us into the foreseeable future, and we're happy that he will be.
I am very happy that he will be, and so I have... that was my only thing on this, I just wanted to clarify that. So I will move item 4M, the annual appointment of Assistant Weed Inspector to Vince Cockrell.
All right. Further discussion, all those in favor of appointing Vince Cockrell, the Assistant Weed Inspector for calendar year 2012, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say nay, carried. Next matter is O, 4O. Member Sprague?
Yes, Your Honor. Just curious, we have the ETC recommendation is different from the BETF, so when we're authorizing this action, which recommendation are we authorizing?
Thank you, Commissioner Sprague. The recommendation, I think, as it was meant to be stated, was that we... the information presented from the Bike Edina Task Course was presented to the Transportation Commission. They modified that recommendation. Staff is concurring with the recommendation from the ETC to move forward with the southwest quadrant of our community, leaving out the 50th segment from Wooddale to Halifax Road at this time. So the recommendation before you is meant to state the southwest corner of the state of the city consistent with the ETC recommendation.
Thank you. With that clarification, I'll move the matter.
Second.
All right, moved and seconded that we adopt the 2012 bike routes recommendation as recommended by the ETC. Further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say nay, carried. And then P, 4P. Member Sprague?
Yes, Your Honor. Looking at a few different items on the traffic report, safety report, can you talk about item one, striping on the south side of the intersection of Normandale Road?
Thank you, Commissioner Sprague, Councilmember Sprague. Yes, this location was brought to our attention by a resident called in to our Traffic Safety Committee this past fall after the project was complete. His question or concern was that due to the fact that this is kind of a wide-throated area in there, that a number of vehicles traveling northbound want to travel, make a right turn and travel east, and a number want to make a left turn and travel west. And his indication was by striping a dedicated left and right turn lane at that location, we better define where the cars are going to sit so that maybe a car wanting to make a left turn wouldn't be blocking a car that could make a right turn. And so it just went through the traffic safety review process. We agreed with it that we could put a stripe in there for the first 50 to about 100 feet to better delineate those lanes and hopefully allow those... access those movements to the right without being blocked by cars waiting to make a left turn.
Now, is there any additional signage being considered for this intersection? I know that someone mentioned another "Do Not Enter" sign and some other things that residents brought up.
Excuse me, this is located at the south of Christ Presbyterian Church, so this would be at the... coming out of the neighborhood down by Lake Edina as you head north. There'd be no additional... this is a two-way street, so they would be allowed to have access, ingress and egress access at that location. I think what you're referring to is further north up at 66th and...
Okay.
And Normandale. So, yeah, this is just a way to kind of clear this area up a little bit and make a little better operation. It's not that the road's open to traffic, seeing how people are adjusting the area. It just makes sense.
Okay, and then on section B1, someone requested in-street pedestrian crossing signs. I'm just wondering if we're considering taking that bricking that we've used in the south... in the quadrant near Southdale, and taking that and up towards that area, into other areas, because it seems like an effective crosswalk device?
Certainly. We have before us a council direction to look at a feasibility report for the sidewalk on School Road. This is a little bit different location, this is up at... well, right near there, actually. And so I think we'll be looking more detail than that this spring when we have the feasibility report for the sidewalk. This particular request was more stated towards the fluorescent yellow freestanding signs that I think they were requesting, and those are difficult around the Southview campus due to the bus turn movements. They tend to get run over pretty consistently, and so School, actually, on their behalf and some of the up along Southview, have actually taken to dragging those out in the street during critical times and pulling them back themselves using some, I guess, independent traffic control, so to speak. But yes, we will be looking at all these options when we get down to the Concord School and that feasibility of sidewalk there, and we'll be working with the school closely to make any improvements.
Okay, great. Number four, request for a crosswalk near the wider section of York Avenue, just north of the Promenade. Now, was that near the Continental, which I see is a walk shed? There's no pedestrian crossing there, but people use it as a walk shed across York. Is that in the general vicinity of that area?
I'm not familiar with the actual building name, but it's near that rather large divider, splitter in the roadway, the oval about, so to speak, that's there. The request was looking for a way to cross York Avenue without having to go up to Hazelton or down to the pedestrian, the Promenade, underpass at that loop further to the south. And after our staff review, it just... it obviously makes most logical sense to cross a county, state, roadway like that at a signalized intersection or at a grade-separate intersection, so our recommendation was certainly to not cross mid-block, but yet to use one of the two crossings that are currently available to them.
There could be some possible reconfiguration when we start to look at the greater Southdale area transportation as part of this multi-jurisdictional committee we're going to put together this year, so that obviously is an area of interest for me because I know that there... people are using that as a walk shed even though there's not a facility there. I think that's it for me at this point, so I will move the balance.
All right, you want to move the adoption of the Traffic Safety Committee report?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say nay, carried. Last matter was mine, 4S. I pulled it only for the purpose of seeing if my colleagues would be comfortable changing the public hearing date to February 21. I'm going to be out of the state on February 6, and so, Member Swenson, your mayor pro tem again, is that going to work for your schedule if we move this to the 21st? This proposed matter involving the establishment of a TIF district, public hearing for establishment of a TIF district for something? Does it work for your schedule?
Right, so you want to move it off the 6th?
Off the 6th, 21st.
When you're not going to be here, to the 21st, when you're going to be here.
I am going to be here.
So...
So... but nonetheless, you'll have to be here.
On the 6th.
And the rest will be on the 6th.
Right, no, that's fine.
All right. So there's two places in this resolution. Section 1 has a February 6 date, we can change that to the 21st, and then section 2 and the second to the last line, I'm assuming Clerk Mengen, that that should be February 21st as well? No later than 10 or more than 30 days prior to February 21, 2012?
I believe so, yes, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you.
And then, Your Honor, we'll need to take a similar action when you are in panel with the HRA later tonight.
All right, thank you. So I would move that matter, moving the hearing date and changing the public notice to reflect the 21st of February as a hearing date for that particular matter.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say nay, carried. All right, now, we do not have any special recognitions or presentations this evening. We're going to move right into the public hearing portion of the agenda, and the first two matters on for public hearing are the proposed street reconstruction projects for the Viking Hills neighborhood and Valley Estates neighborhood. I'm going to ask staff by way of background, and they may be way ahead of us here, we've been doing this now, I think, for about eight years. We have all of these streets in our community that are 40, 50 years old, they're at the end of their useful life. We want to make sure that we maintain a sound public infrastructure. It's one of the things I think that folks look for when they come to purchase a home in a particular community, so we've methodically gone about this process. We hired some consultants to help us establish a pavement condition index that allowed us to take a look at the worst projects or the worst needs first. I guess that would be a better way to say it. And I'm going to ask Mr. Sullivan, who, as he goes about the task of talking about why staff is recommending that we next go to Viking Hills and then the Valley Estates neighborhoods, to give us a little bit more background on why we are doing this in this methodical way.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, yes, a good introduction. The City of Edina Engineering Department, on a revolving basis, about every four years, has a chance to look at each part of our community. So every four years, we rate a part of town. We have a consultant firm that specializes in this type of work. They go out and visually inspect the roadway and rate it on a number of factors. It's a program that's used across the country, across the world, actually, and they help to compile a rating for every street in town, and it's a mixture of the different types of cracking, settlement, heaving, pavement condition in general. They're able to provide the city of Edina with a computer program, and then obviously the data to populate that program that shows and is able to rank all of our streets in town, and rate from 0 to 100, with 0 being a road that's in very, very bad shape and 100 with being almost a brand-new roadway. And what they do, what this program allows us to do is allows us to allocate our dollars, our capital improvement dollars accordingly. Certain sections of roadway within our community fall into that zone that is very low on that rating scale, to the point where it needs something more than just patching, overlays, seal coating. It needs to be reconstructed. That's the common practice for that. There's another section of roadways that are above that in the rating scale that need maintenance dollars to help extend their lifespan. They still have some useful life left in them, and by putting appropriate number of dollars and improvements to that, we can extend that life out and keep that pavement condition and that quality up there. And then the third section is the neighborhoods or the streets that are considerably better quality, and there's little to no work that needs to be done on those other than some we need to program out for future maintenance activities. Like with all of these, you put on a brand-new pavement in year one, it slowly starts to deteriorate. Deterioration speeds up over time, and that's what we at the city here are trying to get ahead of, and maintain an infrastructure, a surface infrastructure of our pavement that we're able to keep our maintenance costs down, keep good ride quality, and keep good visual quality as well. I think we all would agree that a nice, smooth road is better to live on for a number of reasons, quality of life being one of those. And so we use this program and use this rating system to go through town and pick projects that fall into that reconstruction category, and that's what we're here tonight to talk about, is the reconstruction category. We also have a separate program that's going on at the same time that says there's some streets that are in better condition, and we don't need to be reconstructing those. Let's use our maintenance dollars here. And the goal of this entire program that we have, both on the engineering and reconstruction side, and then on the maintenance, public works maintenance side, is to minimize the long-term expenses to the city while maintaining a high quality of pavement within our community. So that is, I guess, the overview. Why we picked Viking Hills Road Improvement BA 386, I'll kind of dive into it right now and kind of move forward. This project of Viking Hills is made up of five distinct cul-de-sac streets. I got Polar Circle, Glacier, Place, Arctic Way, Gleason Court, Vernon Hills Road, and Vernon Court. And this is located in kind of a little area just north across town, west of Gleason Roadway, so we're talking west of Bretisson Park here, and then south of Vernon Road. So very near the western edge of Edina, and like I said, right north across town. And you notice that there's kind of five distinct cul-de-sacs here. They're all grouped together based on the pavement condition. Our initial discussion, when we do a two-year advance notice on neighborhoods, in this neighborhood, we started off with Polar Circle and Arctic Way. Those are the streets that were built much older, they were built in the '60s and had significant pavement condition concerns. Looking closer, though, at the general area, the other neighborhood... the other three streets, actually, Glacier Place, Vernon Hills Road, and then Gleason Court, also have very poor ratings for pavement, and so it was decided during this fall of 2011 to incorporate all five of these streets into a bigger project. We'll talk in a little more detail about how we've done that. So this project was initiated by staff as part of our pavement condition management program, and like I said, they were built in the '60s and the '80s, kind of a big difference in timeframe here. However, the condition of the roadways is pretty similar, and we'll talk about why that is in a little bit more detail in a minute. Council did receive a petition from the Glacier Place residents asking that their street be removed from this particular project. We do know that there's a number of issues out there with some stormwater drainage. A lot of the stormwater drainage is kind of the rear yard drainage, the sump pump discharges, the eave trough discharges, things like that that are kind of causing issues. We also know that there's some sanitary sewer repairs. Like I said, the neighborhood's built in the '60s, it's starting to show a little bit of age in the sewer, and then same thing with the water main. We know there's some water main improvements that can be done in these neighborhoods as well. Couple of photos here that show the poor pavement condition that we have. All of these streets have curb and gutter. Most of them have the surmountable style curb and gutter to be, excuse me, the surmountable drive-over type of curb and gutter. However, Polar Circle does have a... there's some barrier-style curb on it. They're all about the same width, around 30, 31 feet wide, and you can see a great example of the pavement condition there in the upper-right corner. Staff is preparing to look at doing spot repair to these existing curb and gutter. There's spots that have settled out, heaved over time, or cracked. Excessive amount of cracking will be looked at to be replaced. We'll also be removing the block top itself there and the aggregate base beneath it, and that's kind of some of the reasons why these roads are showing their wear and tear at different times. It's the aggregate base beneath them is different, the soil that they're sitting upon is somewhat different, and that all goes into the freestyle and the issues with construction traffic and just vehicle traffic on those, and they've worn at different rates. Part of our improvement, though, is not to include sidewalk. These are five cul-de-sac streets that do not, at least not indicated in our comp plan of needing sidewalk. The questionnaire results that we see back from the residents also kind of bore that out, that they thought that the streets did not need sidewalk. There'll also, as we mentioned, be some underground improvements as well. When we do the street surface improvements, a number of factors go into neighbors that we choose. One of the factors is pavement, as we talked about already. The other factors are the underground utilities. We want to make sure that we're doing the work in a sequential order, that we don't go in and pave this roadway and then come back in a shorter timeframe than we'd expect and have to dig it back up again to do underground utility work. So while we're in there, we're going to do all the work at the same time. This isn't a wholesale replacement of the utilities, this is going to be a spot repair. We televise the sanitary sewer to know where we have cracks and deficiencies and sags. We'll be addressing those issues. We'll also be changing out all the fire hydrants in this area. Over the years, the fire hydrants just need to be upgraded, and some gate valve replacement as well. These are the type of things that we need as a public works department, need to operate frequently, obviously fire hydrants for obvious reasons, but the gate valves as well, if there was a water main break in these areas, we need to be able to shut down the system quickly. And a lot of these older gate valves were made of different materials, they've been in the ground for upwards of 50 years and are not operating, not all of them are operating as they should be, so we want to replace those with this project. We also want to be doing some modifications of storm sewer. There's some areas that we do recognize that there's going to be some upgrades, the drainage patterns, and part of that is install the sump pump drain tile, kind of in accordance with the questionnaire results. A lot of people commented where they have drain tile issues and would like to connect in our system. As I kind of mentioned a minute ago, these are five distinct neighborhoods. We started our neighborhood informational meeting back in the October timeframe, kind of addressing them as five separate neighborhoods. The reason we did that is that we felt that there was a number of distinct differences or not with the density of the lots in there. Some of these are twin homes, some are single-family homes, some fall under the townhome kind of category, and they all have separate accesses there, considerably distance away. And a good example of a project that was done similar to this was 2005, the Bramar Hills, where we had a couple cul-de-sac neighborhoods that had individual entrances, so to speak, but were not connected, so there was no kind of drive-through, drivability to the neighborhood or to our construction zone. So we chose in the neighborhood informational meeting to present assessments the same way as individual street improvements. A letter did go out from the Engineering Department on my behalf on December 21, letting residents know about the upcoming public hearing this evening. Within that letter, there was discrepancies, some mistakes on my behalf that kind of indicated to the residents that there was an overall singular assessment, that every resident would pay the same amount, around $6,600. That mistake was quickly determined, quickly found on our behalf, and we sent out a revised letter on the 21st, kind of indicating that we're back to this individual, that if you live on Arctic Way, you're going to be paying assessment for the improvements to Arctic Way. If you live on Glacier Place, you'll be paying improvements to Glacier Place, and not kind of lumping the entire project as into one large category. So the graphic here just kind of shows the different assessable cost amounts, the $342,000 for Arctic Way, $70,000 for Glacier, the Gleason Court, $175,000, Polar at $73,000. Vernon Court and Vernon Hills Road are really one roadway, they have two separate names, at $157,000. And those are all the assessable costs that a resident who lives on one of those streets would expect to partake in helping to fund. The utilities at the bottom of this graphic, though, are utility costs throughout the entire project and are shared and funded through the respective utility funds. So the stormwater utility fund is expected to pick up a $100,000 tab, water main at about $50,000, sanitary sewer about $80,000. Those are items that are not assessed to the residents, along with the curb and gutter is not assessed to residents. So the resident portion above is just for the improvements to the roadway surface itself and some of the peripherals associated with the roadway. Bringing our project total to just over $1 million, $1,47,000. So to clarify, I know that there were some questions that were brought up by council members as well as by residents in the neighborhood about the discrepancy with the two mailers. I wanted to kind of go through it in some more detail. So each neighborhood or each street is based on residential occupancy unit, where a single-family home is the 1REU. So Arctic Way is expected, at this point, an estimated assessment amount of $7,600. So that's all the homes that you see in blue. Skip ahead, Glacier Place here in the northeast part of this is estimated at $7,000 per parcel. And then Gleason Court, these is... the first two are all single-family homes. Gleason Court is a neighborhood that's made up of solely twin homes, and so there's $6,250 is the estimated assessment amount for these per side of the twin home. And obviously, you can see the dollar amount's a little bit different, but there's more units to share in the cost, a higher density. And then Polar Circle, around $8,000, $1,000, excuse me, $8,112.11 for that improvement. And then Vernon Court and Vernon Hills Road, for clarification purposes, all the twin homes that are located in purple are at $7,700 approximately per assessment. The townhomes located in the southwest corner are just over $4,800, and then the one single-family home that's located just off of Vernon is at $9,600. So that's kind of an overview of the assessment. This is a schedule that we've been working with the homeowners on through the neighborhood informational meetings and up through the feasibility report here tonight. Here we are in early January with a public hearing, and we are expecting to open bids if council awards this project tonight in late March or early April, get the project rolling in the springtime, finish up this fall, and have a feasibility hearing this fall, excuse me, the fall of 2013. So with that, staff does believe this is a necessary project based on the pavement condition, some of the utility improvements that are necessary, it's cost-effective, the prices are very in line with what we're seeing in the last couple of years for construction activities, and feasible. We can build it in a single year. We'll end up phasing this a little bit so that each resident or each street will not have long-term summer construction, they will have a focused time period throughout the summer, through a smaller segment of the summer where they'll be doing their work and then moving on. And it is staff's recommendation that council approves the Viking Hills neighborhood roadway improvement BA 386, and I will take any questions you have with that. Thank you.
Sure, I have some questions. Member Brindle?
Would you please put up the map?
Yeah.
With the streets.
This is good enough, or you want me to go over to the beginning?
That's a good one.
Okay.
Vernon Hills Road and Gleason Court. There are homes located on one side of Vernon Hills Road, not on two, so does the city own the property on the other side of Vernon Hills Road?
That property to the south of Vernon Hills Road is MinDOT right-of-way.
All right.
State of Minnesota owns that.
Are they sharing in the assessment?
We have not indicated that they should be responsible for sharing the assessment. The rationale for that is that assessments typically, we have to show some benefit back to the property according to state statute 429, and it's difficult to show how the state would receive benefit from this improvement. Secondly, our policy, our assessment policy has a... is directly tied to access. MinDOT has no access here, nor would any of the homeowners want that, I believe. So because they have no way... this road does nothing for them, they can't access it, they don't use it, and it doesn't benefit their parcel if improvements were made on this. Those are the staff's rationale why we did not include it.
Okay. Another question, and that is the surmountable curb, is that going to remain?
Yes, thank you. That will remain everywhere. Yes, uh, thank you. I, that will remain everywhere except for spots that have, that have excessive settlement, heaving, or, um, damage that is making it no longer viable. So we'll do spot repairs of that curb and gutter, but the vast majority of these neighborhoods will remain. So, um, access for residents, um, up their driveway, um, the roadway width will stay the same. We're not going to encroach any under the yards. Uh, a lot of benefits, uh, for keeping that in place. It's very, very, um, good condition curb for the most part.
Okay. Then, my last question has to do with pavement ratings, and they range from five to thirty-eight. Um, Vernon Hills Road is at a five. Now, that would indicate to me that that's a dangerous road to drive on, that it's really rough and bumpy, and the pavement is broken up and missing in places. Would I be accurate?
Um, I think, um, that may be a little bit of an extreme, um, characterization. Pavement rating, uh, itself with the lower numbers does mean that the pavement is no longer, um, it's, it's no longer usable in the sense that it has lost its structural integrity. It has started to break up in pieces that are small enough that, um, they no longer support as a whole unit. Um, it does not necessarily mean that there's potholes or unevenness to the point where it would be an unsafe road to driveway, to drive on. Um, the city of Dinah, obviously, would do maintenance of activities, pat hole patching, things like that for areas that are substantially to the, to the characterization that you're discussing. What this is saying is that a zero roadway has, or a five in this case, has, has lost its structural ability to, to hold up that roadway together. Uh, we have issues with, um, our spring thaw type of cycles that we're going to have here coming up another month or so, even right now for that matter. Um, and plow activity says that road starts to move around, uh, plows can start moving that, pieces of roadway with, um, off into the yards with roadways that are kind of getting down to this category of five and below.
Okay. And then looking at the thirty-eight, for example, on Polar Circle, or the thirty-three on Jake, on Glacier Place, um, I think it's great that you've separated these projects as individual projects because we can discuss them individually. Being that these have such higher numbers, do they have to happen now?
Um, well, that is a good question, and the, the graphic you're referring to was the pavement rating as it was rated in two thousand and nine. Um, since that time, uh, like I said, that within the computer program, they actually, uh, put on a graph, a deterioration curve, what that pavement is expected to be, um, when we go out there today or tomorrow. It, and we're now talking, the Glacier Place is down in the, in the twenty, twenty-ish range. Uh, the council, uh, when council received the petition this fall, in October, we gave a number of twenty on there because that's what we believe the pavement to be today. As I stated earlier, um, it's too expensive for the city to go out and rate every road every year. So what we do is we take and do a quarter of the roads every year. So we expect that, uh, approximately about a quarter of those. We expect to be coming back and reevaluating this in twenty thirteen if this wasn't to be reconstructed. And I would expect the pavement rating would be in those high eighteen's by then to mid-eight, uh, mid-fifteen, sixteen range by then.
Okay. Now, uh, for the infrastructure work that needs to be done, do you anticipate needing to dig into, uh, beneath the roadway in order to do those and to do that and make those improvements or do the televising and whatever you do?
Yes, council member Brendel, we, uh, expect that, uh, some of the improvements, namely to the sanitary sewer, uh, where we've already televised and know where there's areas of deficiency, and the water main, uh, will need to be dug to do improvements to, at least for the most part. And those are somewhere between seven and about ten feet. So yes, there will be some opportunities, uh, for construction activities to create a trench or hole that would be upwards of ten feet deep in an area.
Okay. And that would include the hydrant work, I suppose, as well?
Yeah, there, there, you know, hydrants about eight feet deep, so you have to dig a hole, uh, deep enough to be able to work a foot if you want it. So you're talking about ten feet deep.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Member Swenson.
There was a letter that we got talking about the age of the roadway, and since we've had, I think it was last year, the, the dead end off of Interlochen that actually petitioned us to replace it, and it seems to me they were maybe a nineteen eighty-one or eighty-two constructed roadway, and it hadn't held up the way one would expect it to. Um, I know we've said that thirty years is an average lifetime, so from nineteen eighty-one to twenty-twelve, I suppose we're at thirty years, but the other ones are older in this neighborhood. Um, so we have seen nineteen eighty-one and eighty-two not hold up as long as maybe some from the fifties and sixties.
And that's true. Thank you, uh, council member Swenson. Um, yes, there's a number of reasons why that's possible. Um, like I said, what kind of soils the roads were built on, what type of pavement was used at the time. A lot of the pavements over the years have, have changed their mix, and sometimes they have less oil, sometimes they have more oil. And some of the streets with the less oil don't hold up as well. Um, another thing that changes a lot is, uh, residential irrigation, as amazing as that may sound. I have, uh, our soils engineer, uh, will tell us time and time again, a neighborhood that's got a lot of residential irrigation, you're putting more water near the roadway or under the roadway, more susceptible to, um, a saturated condition year-round under there that frees and thaws differently than a roadway that doesn't have as much irrigation. So there's a number of factors. Some are, some, some you can engineer in and you can engineer out. Other ones are a little bit more, um, unique to the neighborhood or to the street. So, uh, there's a lot of factors, and you're right. Uh, we had a neighborhood last year, it was a nineteen eighty-nine roadway that, uh, was in very poor condition. Um, Vernon Hills Court, some of the residents didn't bring up that the street was actually built around nineteen eighty-one. The utilities were installed, the street was installed in eighty-one. However, it wasn't platted until ninety-two, ninety-three, when it went through the planning commission process. And homes, I think, can start going up until ninety-three, ninety-four in that actual neighborhood. Uh, there again, though, um, you have a roadway that's built, and then you bring in, um, sixteen to twenty homes being built with concrete, asphalt, um, shingles, drywall, those type of activities. And, um, and obviously, like I said, subsoil condition, things like that have all led to, um, these roadways being in the condition that they are today.
Okay. And then my second question, we got a letter from, um, Gary Hope concerned with how we figured REUs as to the Vernon Court Town Home Association and the Vernon Hills Town Home Association. Have you had a chance to look at that letter and to assess what issue he has and if he's, if you can help with that question, that would be great.
Certainly. I, I'm not familiar with the letter. I think, was that the one that was just delivered tonight then, or do you have a, a different topic? I'm sorry.
Um...
Correspondence on this.
He's on my desk, it's up tonight. It was on my email as of this morning, and the re, the second one...
This is it.
Um, was...
I've got it here.
Right. Oh, correction on it, was on my email this afternoon.
Sure. Um, well, I, I have talked with, uh, with Mr. Hope, and I think I can convey, um, our discussion and then kind of my response to that.
That'd be great, thanks.
Um, yeah, his concern, it was circulated around the twin homes. The vast majority of the homes on the Vernon Hills, uh, side of the street or on that roadway itself are the twin homes. And there's a smaller number, five units, that fall under the town home category, and then one single family home in there. Um, our current local assessment policy does not have a lot of language in it regarding the use or the, uh, when we encounter multiple dwelling units. Um, our state aid policy that was originally in, uh, two thousand and six did have a pretty good way to address, um, multiple unit operations, um, dwellings like that. Our current state aid policy, um, is a little more vague in that category. So what staff did is staff took the recommendation that was came out of our two thousand and six state aid policy, which said that, um, we're going to base everything off of residential equivalency unit, one single family home. And then, because a town home, uh, typically generates less trips than a single family dwelling, usually about eight trips for every ten trips out of a residential home, we're going to charge them point eight of an assessment amount per side of the REU, be, for the town home. Um, then there's another category, that's for kind of twin homes and quad units. Then there's another category for apartments, condominiums, um, some things like that. And so, uh, it was staff's understanding and working with the assessing department that we believe that the five town home units on the west end probably fit as, as close as, as any, um, any of the categories with the condominium side. So that's where they were charged point five per REU. So yes, they would be, in this case, uh, being, um, assessed a half of an REU instead of eight tenths of an REU.
And I didn't have an opportunity to drive down that road, but can you help me with, do those five units each have a separate driveway out to the street, or do they have one entrance to the street that they all exit on? Because I know the twin homes along there all have their own.
I believe they all have, um, one exit that kind of goes out the back to them, to their access under the roadway. And, um, staff did talk about, um, if those would be to modify to, to be similar to the twin homes, using the same eight-tenth rule, and what that would do to the assessment amount and how would that fluctuate. And it, we would change it. It changed it approximately three hundred dollars for everyone within the neighborhood. However, um, the methodology that we used early on, I've stayed consistent with, and we'll ask that if you have some concerns about that, we can discuss in more detail when we get to the assessment hearing, uh, a year from this fall.
You know, I, he looked at it as to ownership and compared it that way. I really look at it as to driveways, to be honest. So, thank you for your explanation.
Other questions? Mr. Sullivan, Member Bent?
Um, following up on the same line of questioning, um, is there anything in the Institute of Transportation Engineers guidelines or, uh, standards that provide guidance for this? I had some correspondence with Attorney Knutson earlier today, and I understand that at least old ITE manuals do, but really looking for something that's more policy-based, since our policy had it, but it didn't carry over into the revision, and it wasn't a policy that applied. It was multiple, it was municipal state aid street policy, not non-municipal state aid street policy. So what is the policy or technical engineering underpinning for that analysis?
Thank you, Councilmember Bennett. Um, Institute of Transportation Engineers, ITE, states that, well, they have three volumes of books that are, each one's about this thick, that goes through and says that for a certain use, they've studied so many of those uses across the country. Let's take, uh, a single family home or a daycare, or, you know, they've gone through this hundreds and hundreds, these public school, private school, um, a large box store versus whatever. And they've gone through and done somewhere between twenty and, you know, between five and, and hundreds of traffic studies across the country. And they try, try to get a statistical average of what a, what that particular development would generate in traffic. And as you can imagine, you could may look, you could maybe look at, um, private daycares across the country, and you get a wide range of how many trips per day they generate based on so many thousand square foot or whatever the number is. So what they, what the ITE typically does is they say, well, we've collected the data on a hundred, um, daycares, and of those hundred daycares, there's, there's this average between X number and Y number of cars per day, um, that are generated out of this per thousand square foot. And so that's kind of the same logic that was used for twin homes, the apartments, the condos, that there's a range of, of units or trips that can be generated from each unit. And so I, I think our, if you refer, if referring back to that chart in the two thousand and eight policy, two thousand and six policy, where it says point eight and point five, um, those are kind of averages that we pulled from there to say, well, on average, there's, uh, eight trips per town home for every ten trips per residential unit. That's kind of the logic that was used there. So I don't know that there's a, a policy per se, but the, the underpinning is the fact that they've done all these studies across the country, and the data they've collected have developed their ranges that they're, we're then utilizing for all of our traffic modeling today. We use this all across the country, and we use it here in Adina to kind of get the gauge on what is a new, um, drugstore going to do, what's a new, uh, Westin Galleria going to do to our, to our network. So I, I'm not sure, did that answer the question that...
It does. Does, does, sorry. Does the ITE manual, the ITE manual, uh, contains information with respect to single family homes, duplexes, quads, condominiums, does it distinguish between duplexes or twin homes and town homes?
I believe that it does. Um, like I said, there's, um, multiple, there's a couple hundred different distinctions in there, and I, I don't have them all memorized, but they would typically make the distinctions. We at the city, um, kind of in concurrence with that two thousand and six policy, kind of say, well, let's, let's try to congeal some different ranges. And so that's what was done at that time. And we've, we've moved forward with that, um, to apply it here. But I'm sure you, um, like with any project that comes in, there's always the high end of the range, and there's always the low end of the range that could be debated whether you're a proponent or, uh, whether you're for or against a project.
I, I think what I'm struck with is the four units versus, four units would be a quad. If there were four, if there were four town homes, would it have been a quad?
Yes, certainly. I think the methodology here would just, um, not, uh, necessarily split hairs at the time, just recognize that, um, we chose a direction and move forward when, and like I said, I, I certainly think that if, if it's something that, uh, council deemed that was a, you know, we would like staff to look more detailed into and, and analyze, um, if we were to change those, what would it do to the assessment amounts? And we could be discussing this, uh, next fall. Certainly have no problem with that. Like I stated, I kind of did the quick analysis, um, with the individual who, uh, members, Swenson, we started talking about a minute ago, and it changes the assessment amount three to four hundred dollars. Um, so it does change it without a doubt, and it's something that's, I think, could be looked at as we get a little closer to the assessment hearing, personally.
Member Sprague.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just following up on that point, I think, I think we should, um, come forward to some type of written policy. It sounds like the factors are the estimated trips, the type of use, and the, the access points, as Member Swenson was discussed. So when we're trying to explain to a resident why they're getting charged more or less, it would be helpful to have a written policy in place that we can, so that, that they know we're making consistent decisions. So I would support that endeavor. Can you, um, tell me about the drainage issues? I'm looking at the, uh, staff concerns and drainage and sewer and water deficiencies in particular?
Um, yeah, um, Member Sprague, the, um, residents along Glacier Place are the ones that, um, indicated that they had some drainage concerns, uh, to do with sump pump drainage. If the lower half of Glacier Place is considerably lower than the homes that are above on Arctic Way, so they got a lot of rear yard drainage that comes down, and plus they have some sump pump and other discharges. Um, staff is suggesting that we put in a sump pump drain tile. It's still within our right-of-way that we'd allow the residents to connect into if they so choose to. It's not something that we're going to be, um, putting on a private property or to, to get into some backyards and fix, uh, concern that they have in the backyard. Uh, it'd be a much more extensive project, obviously easement, acquisition, things like that. But we're allowing some, um, boulevard-style drain tile connections for improvements that they may deem necessary out there. And then the water main, the water main itself is actually in really good shape. It's all ductile iron pipe, uh, which is a newer pipe style, uh, since about, uh, late fifties, early sixties that is less, um, apt for, um, long-term issues such as, uh, you know, rusting out or fracturing and, and having leaks in it. However, like I said, though, the hydrants, um, and the gate valves are buried under eight to ten feet of soil. Um, there are different types of valves. Um, they don't have as good of operations in the old day, in the older valves as they do today. So we're certainly going to be repairing and removing and replacing all of those. Um, from a water main and water service aspect, it's very minimal changes in this neighborhood.
And the, uh, so it looks like the, the lion's share of the assessments for the roads themselves, um, eighty percent for the road, twenty percent for the underground utilities. Is that, how does that compare to an average project?
Um, for clarification, uh, about eighty percent of the overall project cost would be the assessable, and the twenties percent would be the non-assessable to the residents, uh, making up the utility funds. And that's, uh, that's probably a little bit on the low end, uh, but that goes to show that this neighborhood isn't, and these couple of the streets aren't as old, so there's less underground improvements. Um, you recall, like I mentioned, Woods, that was last year, a much more extensive underground replacement project. That probably was approaching forty to fifty percent of the overall project cost. Um, so twenty's probably in the low end, uh, forty, fifty's probably on the high end.
So the, the main driver is the above-ground infrastructure, not the, the under?
Correct. Uh, but obviously, you don't want to ignore the underground, uh, infrastructure when we're making these great improvements of the surface.
Right. Okay. And then, uh, the, uh, ETC had some comments, uh, talking about, these are traffic-related issues, but, um, it said, they asked about the stop sign at Arctic and Vernon. Does it have a stop line and a double yellow? Did we ever...
Um, thank you, uh, Member Sprague. Uh, yeah, there was, uh, whenever we do these projects, we send out questionnaires asking, is there traffic issues in your neighborhood? And a lot of times we get back, well, we get back very good information all the time on these. Sometimes they start to creep outside of a project or the intersection that they use every day, and this is one of these cases where it's kind of on the periphery, still within our project. If we can make some improvements here, we would look to do so. Um, the question is, is an all-way stop sign that tends to, or the concern was that it, it's not adhered to as much as it should be as an all-way stop. Um, staff is looked at from an engineering standpoint, and, um, you know, it has all the things that are talked about, double yellow line, um, good sight lines. It has everything that it needs to. It just, we believe is a driver compliance issue. Um, I've talked with the police department on that. Um, they've ebbed and flowed a little bit with the complaints that they get in that area. Uh, lately, they haven't had many complaints. However, they, they do put these back on, and per our request, they put these back on the revolving, um... however, they do put these back on, and per our request, they put these back on the revolving area to check in on and do a little enforcement to make sure that there's not a lot of rolling stops happening out there.
Are there other methods available other than enforcement to increase stop sign compliance, anything from an engineering or equipment point of view?
Well, it was talked about, about the double yellow, the flashing, there's other things that can be done, certainly. Here again, there's-
But no different than any other intersection?
Correct.
Where we have?
Yep, where driver compliance is always-
An issue.
Well, is never 100%, and I certainly would stress that this location's probably no different than that, and that I really think that the accident levels are, there's, you know, no accidents at this location, hasn't been an issue to date, hasn't been a compliance issue from the police standpoint in a number of months, number of years, actually. I think, I think it's doing pretty well, actually.
So it's back to education and enforcement?
Yeah.
And this, this area is broken up into several different assessable areas, can you explain why we took that approach? I assume it has something to do with the varying densities throughout the neighborhood?
Yeah, we did. We took a look at the projects, project area, the geographical area of all five streets, and said that because of the weighted nature of the townhomes and townhomes in the south, two roadways, Gleason and Vernon Hills, that we may need to find a more appropriate way to assess the residents for the improvements that they're receiving on their corridor, much like we did with the Country Club, where we split into two neighborhoods based on the housing sizes on the east side, a lot sizes on the east side versus the west side, and treating them as separate individual projects, but doing them under one big contract number. Same thing here, we felt that because they have independent accesses on to whatever main roadway you're talking about, either Vernon or Gleason, and the fact that they have different densities, that there could be a potential big enough swing that somebody in one part of the neighborhood or geographical area could be paying a considerable more-
Percentage.
On an average basis than, yeah. So our thought was, well, maybe we should split these out and look at them independently for most fair approach to the neighborhood.
And that practice is something that you've used in other places, it sounds like, too.
Yep, we've used it in Braymore Hills, Country Club, and a few other neighborhoods, those are the two ones that come to mind right away. It's something that maybe other communities don't do as much as we're starting to do here, but because of these cul-de-sac type of nature, these and the varying densities, we felt it was the most appropriate and fairest way to do that.
It seems like this has been the most varied density in one project area that I've seen thus far.
Certainly, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks. I'm thinking about, as I'm sitting here listening, listening to my colleagues, I'm thinking about some of the questions that we hear from folks, it seems like every January, that are important things to address, and for instance, preliminary assessment, these preliminary numbers that you propose, if these, either these projects were approved, or both of them were approved, what do these preliminary assessment numbers mean, if you understand my question? Can you go higher than that later on, on the assessment, or are you trying to be conservative here and cautious in terms of what's required by state law?
Thank you, Mayor Hovland. Yes, preliminary means just that, it's an estimate that we have, however, we do put some contingency dollars in these at this point. We want to make sure that the number that we're providing here tonight, although it has increased from our first informational meeting to this evening, that we believe this is an accurate number, and that we want to stay below this when the project comes in. And we've seen good historical results in the last couple of years where we're under these assessment amounts, varied amount. In addition, I stress to the residents when we talk that there's the checks and balances in place, too, that if you authorize this project this evening, we'll go out for bids, we'll do plans and specifications, go out for bids. You, as a city council, will have the opportunity before the contractor is hired to note whether this project is within the budget that the engineering department had originally stated this evening, or if we're beyond that budget. So there again, we have a good checks right off the balance, right off the bat there to say, well, if we're above that dollar amount, staff is going to have reservation about asking council to approve that, and we're going to have to have good reason why we're going to be asking for that. Ultimately, though, like I said, in a lot of cases, these projects have been coming in under those estimated amounts, and we make it through the construction process, and with the final assessment amount coming in a year and a half from now, that are usually pretty favorable. As a rule of thumb, I will, I've told everybody that I've talked to in the last couple of days, that I never want to go above the dollar amount that we're discussing tonight, but as a rule of thumb, I probably wouldn't, I wouldn't feel comfortable from a staff perspective saying 10% more. So we'll take a very good hard look when the bids come back here in March and April to make sure that we're confident that the numbers that we're presenting to you, for you to authorize a contractor, are within that range that we discussed tonight.
All right, and as you mentioned just a minute or so ago, the final assessment hearing would occur in the fall of 2013, almost two years ago.
That's correct, yes. We'll send out another invite to those residents notifying them of the final dollar amount, notifying them of the final public hearing date to be held in the council chambers, and that they can come speak on the behalf of the project at that time, and any concerns or comments that they may have.
And with respect to the issue that Mr. Hope raised about what he perceived to be disparate treatment of these two townhouse associations, where he thought they ought to be equal in terms of their REU assessment, would the council be able to look at that issue between now and the final assessment hearing, or are we locking in tonight on the REU designation per town, for town, each townhouse association? City attorney question, maybe?
Mayor, you're not locking in. You'll make that final decision at the special assessment hearing.
Okay, good, that may be helpful to people. Now, we've got an average, you talked about the pavement condition index that we do every four years, and you've got a scale of zero being the worst to 100 being the best, our average pavement condition index for the city is about 51. And the, I think the average PCI for Viking Hills was, what, 35 or less?
Less, yeah.
Yeah, so, and now, and one of the questions that a few folks raised in emails that I read was, well, why can't we just do a Melanoverlayer, why can't we just do a Seal Coat? And I think that's all driven, what I would call scientifically, based on engineering principles, depending on the pavement condition index, is that correct?
That's correct. Once you get to a certain point, putting these, they're not all surface treatments, but more of a surface-type treatment application is going to have a shorter life duration to it than something that is more comprehensive in nature. Good examples of that is if you drive France Avenue north of the crosstown, that was overlay just a year or two, two years ago now, you're starting to see the reflective cracking showing up. A lot of these roadways, Blague Road's a good example of, we did a Melanoverlayer to try to extend some life, it's a state aid roadway, we tried to extend some life on that street. Looked great for the first year, but a year or two later, you start to see the cracks come through again, and you start driving it again this spring as the, as the tenting and freestyle and the heaping happens, and a lot of those cracks are starting to reappear. So we're definitely in a position where, once you get below a certain point, and that, that's a variable point, but once you get below a certain point, it's money not as well spent, it's not capital improvement dollars as well spent, in our opinion.
Okay, so based on our standards, I understand that if the PCI is less than 45, we favor the total reconstruction. Melanoverlayer would be in the 45 to 65 PCI range, and then Seal Coats in the 65 to 95 range?
That's correct, and we're trying, like I said, we have a, we have an engineering reconstruction program that we're talking about this evening, but we also behind the scenes have a public works maintenance activity that is addressing those streets that are in those higher ranges, that we can get some extended life out. By putting relatively small dollar amounts into those streets now, they'll be able to extend their life out and allow us to get and spend dollars on these areas that really need the reconstruction.
All right. One of the other questions that came up, and this is a good question, I think, is why don't we just spread this cost across the entire city, like we do with the money that gets expended below ground from the utility fund? For in Viking Hills, for example, I think it's about 23% of the project cost is below ground, and everybody in Edina is going to help pay for that. Well, why doesn't everybody in Edina help pay for these roadway reconstruction projects that we're, that we're doing?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess the rationale that I would say is that the way that we've set up our local assessment policy statement back in 2006, and then here again revised in 2010, is that we've, the city's taken approaches as a pay-as-you-go approach on these type of things. Our tax base is set forth, maintenance activities, police, snow plowing, city parks and recreation, things like that, and don't go into our overall capital improvement such as pavement. We've done that on, we've chosen as a city to do that, buy these special assessments, at least for the roadway portion, and then spreading out the infrastructure utility funds for the sanitary sewer, storm sewer, and water main funds.
And because these are 429 projects that have to show a benefit to the affected property, in fact, we looked at this, I think, back in 2005, and decided that the city should be paying for any curb that we install in addition to what happens underground, is that correct?
That is correct. Part of the 2005 plan was, policy was that curb and gutter has a number of very beneficial purposes from a city standpoint, from an engineering standpoint, and one of those is conveyance of water, to get it away from the roadway. As I mentioned earlier, irrigation can be a big problem with the lifespan of a roadway, while getting that rainwater away from the roadway and into the storm sewer lessens that chance of wet subgrades. Also, it's kind of the bookends that keep the roadway together, it's very good in keeping things from moving around and creeping edges from unraveling over time as cars park on them, or as construction equipment or larger vehicles cut corners. So there's a number of reasons why the city council and engineering staff recommended that storm sewer fund, the replacement or installation of curb and gutter.
All right, and then somebody may ask a question about, why do we do it on a residential equivalent unit basis and not front footage? And that's an issue we looked at several years ago as well, and determined that we would use an REU standard.
Yes.
Why is that?
Thank you, Mayor Hovland. The reason for that as well is the philosophy that the amount of traffic on a roadway is generated by the use of that, of aligning parcels or joining parcels of land. So if you have uses that are more dense, and you have uses that maybe more commercialized, they're going to generate more trips than, than operations that are single-family homes and on down the line. But it goes back to the fact that trips are generated from a home itself, and not generated from the amount of, the size of the lot necessarily in a single-family home. And so we felt it was a more appropriate measure that each home is anticipated to utilize 10 to 14 trips, right around 12 is what we typically assume here in Edina, trips per home, and that's an average, and then we equate that back when we go to commercial applications, and we kind of use that as a ratio, as a factor. So yes, it was looked at extensively, previous to 2005, we did front footage, but then there again, corner lots paid differently, larger lots paid differently. It seemed to be a little inconsistent in the neighborhood, that larger lots paid more, smaller lots didn't. It wasn't attached to the value of the home or value of the land, not that our new policy is, but it was certainly based around the fact that there was discrepancies between lot to lot, where this is a more uniform approach within a neighborhood.
All right, I had one other question, and it's, well, actually, two more. Sometimes folks ask, in the context of us contemplating whether to approve one of these matters after the hearing, during the hearing, they ask about, what if you damage invisible dog fencing, or you damage my irrigation system, or you damage a tree? What, what happens? What do you do about that? What does, what does the city do about that? Do they stand behind the homeowner?
We certainly do. Excuse me, as part of our contract, we have for our contractor to, well, contractor has penalties for tree damage. Good example, and we've used ever since, Country Club, is that tree damages, putting equipment or supplies on structures near trees, damaging overhead branches, will be deducted from the contract, will be actually fined through contractor. Certainly there is an incentive for them to stay away from those type of activities. When it comes to irrigation, pet containment, first thing we ask is for homeowners to let us know where they have those. We've done that by our questionnaires, things like that. However, construction sometimes has to get into those areas for fire hydrant replacement, new curb and gutter, and we may damage those. We work with the homeowner to notify that that zone is no longer active, we temporarily plug that zone, and then when we're, when time's appropriate, we'll replace that, that location as part of the contract. So we place the irrigation system as part of the contract. Pet containment systems are a little bit different, obviously, you can let your grass go a little more brown for a couple of weeks, however, you don't want to let the dog run around the neighborhood. So we do try to do our best to, once we know we hit those, immediately get those repaired in either temporary or permanent fashion, and we more than likely will have to come back once or twice to make the system completely operational in the fall. But that goes for both irrigation, pet containment, where we will fix the system and then make sure it's operational, either with a fall shutdown period, or sometimes we'll have to wait until the spring startup period to make sure all the heads are spraying in the right direction, that all the lines are currently working as they should be. So it does get taken care of. Residents have to be patient with us, though, and let us get our work done before we put their system back together. There's a sequential order there, and we'll do that at the appropriate time for them.
Okay, good. Any other questions for Mr. Sullivan? We'll open the public hearing if not. All right, this is a public hearing. If you folks remember at the beginning of the meeting, Ms. Benarott got up and said that if you wanted to speak during the public hearing, you'll have three minutes. Same thing's true relative to community comment. The green light will go on when you start to speak, and when you have 30 seconds left, the yellow light will come on, and then we need to have you wrap up right on time when the red light comes on. We try to make sure that we treat everybody the same. Everybody's opinion is important to us, but we make sure that everybody has that same three minutes and no more. And you don't have to take that much if you don't want to, but you're certainly entitled to that three minutes. So when you come up, I would suggest using the side podiums, give us your name and address. If you have anything you want to use from an overhead standpoint, you can use the middle podium, and then Ms. Benarott will hand you a handheld microphone, because you'll need that to speak into when you're talking about your, your overhead. So, folks, come on up, public hearing is open. Yes, sir, welcome.
Thank you. May I, oh, a packet of materials and have it be represented as part of my presentation?
Sure.
You don't have to have my three minutes?
We'll make it part of the record. If you hand it to the clerk, she'll pass it right now.
I've got a copy of what we've sent, and also a copy of an overhead that I had intended to put in, but I don't see a Elmo here, so I'll-
Well, we can still do it.
Oh, can you?
Yeah.
That's fine. Actually, I probably won't be going to offer this much, but let's see. That's okay. Thank you very much. My name is Gary Hope, and I live at 6610 Vernon Hills Road. First of all, thank you, you've got a terrible task of trying to figure out who bears assessments, no one wants them. I also want to say, I want to thank Mr. Sullivan and his staff, they were helpful in answering questions that I had. And the current system of the REU works well where you have one homogeneous street, where all of them are either single-family dwellings or multiple dwellings. Gleason Court's a multiple dwelling, the rest are all single-family. This is a situation in which we have a mixture on Vernon Hills Road, and for that reason, we have, for all practical purposes, the perfect storm of special assessments, because we have all of the elements that come together on that road that give us the worst possible situation. An area that I would take exception with Mr. Sullivan, as he said that the state owns the roadway. His office showed me the plat, and I follow up with the document number, and at his office looked at a deed dated 1981, and the deed, the document number is on the plat, and it says that the property was conveyed 1981 to Edina. When I asked, when I asked them who owned it, not Mr. Sullivan, but the staff, I was informed that Edina owned the land on the other side of our road. I make no representations whether that's accurate, I only make the representations, that's what I was told. With regards to that, as the council's well aware, there's been a number of situations in which the city has contributed some, and I can go through those, of where on the other side of the road was a park, and in several tens of thousands, I've got the listings here for Bredesen Park, Arden Park, the 42nd, 44th Street Park, 70th Street, which you're all familiar with, all of which the city took a part of an REU to help the burden of those people who, part of their street was used by the city. The other area is the issue of whether or not these two townhome complexes should be treated differently. First of all, when Mr. Sullivan said townhomes are common in your process or your policy, it's more than that, it's not mentioned. And to the looking that I found, there's never been a situation in which the city has assessed, under the guise that they're doing it here, a townhome. And in fact, I attach to my materials- And in fact, I attach to my materials the definitions of your special assessment policy dealing with the state aids. That special, that classification does not contain four categories as represented by Mr. Sullivan, but rather three. Single-family homes, the second category is duplexes and quads, and the third category is condominiums and other situations. No reference to townhomes. And if you look at the distinction between the second paragraph and third, or the second category and third, the distinction is the classic distinction between common ownership of condominium and quads, duplexes, or townhomes. And under that scenario, that in and of itself would be sufficient for it. But besides that, the manner in which we operate, our name, everything is identical. I can agree that there may be differences of size, but that's not relevant. Front footage, that's not relevant. Value, that's not relevant under our law. And to Councilman Swenson's point about access to the roadway by the townhome, are we then to have a standard that says if you have an individual road or driveway going for your townhome, then you assess one value? But if your townhome doesn't have a road going out, you're assessed another one? It's a real challenge. I don't envy you folks on this. But clearly, there is no basis to say, under your current laws and under your current policies, that one townhome association is going to be labeled a twin home and therefore pay more than another townhome. Also, I take exception. I think that the difference in the assessment is much more than $300 a home, but that's easily enough calculated. If you have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Hope.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
In the same unit on Vernon Hills Road, and there's a piece of paper, I think...
What's your specific street address, Mr. Peter?
6650 Vernon Hills Road.
Thank you.
Have you got this piece of paper I provided? It says, it's got five points on it. At the top it says, remarks by Vernon Hills Townhome Association.
Right.
There's several issues that we'd like to bring up, five specifically. I'll read very quickly. We got a letter on December 21st and it said $6,600 per residential equivalent unit. We didn't know what a residential equivalent unit was, but it was $6,600. And then on, two days later, we got eight residential equivalent unit will be $9,600. That's a little surprise. So the first point is, the process of notification has been very unclear. We've got conflicting letters on December 21st and December 23rd. We have no definition of what a residential equivalent unit is provided to us and we have not received the feasibility study at all, which was promised. And finally, at the end of this letter, it says, the council can authorize this project immediately upon the close of the hearing. So we get conflicting information on several dates. We don't get the feasibility study and it says, don't worry about it though, we can authorize it on January 3rd. That's the documentation. That's kind of confusing and disturbing. Second point, the 16 homes, eight of us here tonight live in those 16 homes. We are Vernon Hills Townhome Association and on one side of the road and the other side of the road is Edina's city property. We've talked about that and that can be confirmed, validated as you see fit, but we're sure that that's what the case is. And when that happens in other cases, apparently, there's a different way to charge people for assessments, so maybe you should take that into consideration. We have also heard that the word townhomes and the definition of townhomes is not clearly defined as a housing type in your city council regulations. Maybe there's quads and maybe there's condominiums, but there's not townhomes clearly defined and yet we have a townhome association. So maybe, when do the rules apply to us, when don't they apply to us? We'd like you to look into that. We also understand that there's 250 miles of roads that are in Edina and they only have, you only have enough funding for five miles each year, so therefore, you know, it's going to be a long time, like 50 miles, 50 years before everybody gets covered. But it turns out that our particular 16 units in our townhome association, the longest anybody's been there is 18 years. Not 50 years, but the longest we've been there is 18 years. And we were told that, you know, it depends on the usage of the road, on how it'll wear out. Well, we find it hard to believe that we have worn out the roadway in the last 18 years that we've been there. You know, something happened between 1981 and the first time we ever had a townhome. Maybe that's when the road was being degraded, but we don't think we wore out the highway, the roadway in the last 18 years. And we have either one or two persons per townhome. And many of our owners are in Florida or Arizona at something like that at this point. Now, when you add those up, the fifth point and last point is that it doesn't seem logical to assess the 16 present owners for the full cost of the repair for the roadway that's in front of their house, whether they've been there one year or 15 years. That's unfair just for the people that live there. The people that have been there one year don't, haven't had much benefit from this road and they're going to get the full assessment that they have to pay. People that have been there 15 years are going to get the full assessment to pay. That doesn't seem very fair. And another way of doing it is done in St. Louis Park and other places in Minnesota where the city taxes are spread and you do highways whenever you need them, you do the roads whenever you need them, and there are no assessments. The assessment process has built into it this chance, high probability, that whoever lives there a long time is getting benefited, the people that just moved in get stuck. And we have a mixture of those people just in our own townhome association, not having a good definition for townhome association or else. Therefore, our last statement says, you said you were going to make a decision on January 3rd and we urge you not to make a decision tonight, that you look into these issues.
Mr. Peter, I need to have you, I need to have you stop. I'm sorry.
Okay.
You're over, you're over.
Okay. We point out that the, the information has been ragged and there's a lot of open, open questions.
Please, thanks.
Good evening, Your Honor, and thank you to the council for allowing me to speak. My name is Brent Riker and I live at 6416 Glacier Place. And as was indicated earlier, Glacier Place was a street which in fact submitted an petition. And the reason it did so is, as you know, the street is approximately only 400 feet long. It's the shortest street of all the groups. We have no sidewalks. The curbs, as has been discussed, look relatively good and in fact, the roadway frankly, looked fairly good, although it does need some minor repairs or so we thought. And it appears that we have the highest rating. But one of the big concerns we had was initially, when this was discussed, we were under the impression that it was going to be around $4,000. And then, of course, the cost increased. And I live in a cul-de-sac that consists of 10 homes. Obviously, I'm a little bit different than some of the residents. We have 10 homes and of the six homes, six residents are older people, retired, fixed income. And of those residents, we have additionally two widows who are also older and retired. And so one of the concerns we had was if we start at 4,000 and then it goes to 5,000 and then it's approximately 5,500 and then we're at 6,000 and then we get a letter that says it's 6,600 and now we're at 7,000. My concern and request to the council is that the $7,000 for Glacier Place or the 7,600, for example, for Arctic Way, is not the goal, is not the standard. Because in fact, at this point in time, we do not have a bid. We don't have any bids, as I understand. I talked to Mr. Sullivan today. And so what I would encourage the board or the council to do is that if in fact it is the desire of the council to make these improvements, that it strive to do its very, very best to keep the cost at an absolute minimum. Because we have a, in this group, not only on Glacier Place, but in other areas of these streets that we're talking about, we have older residents. And in light of the economy and the perceived lack of work that many of these construction companies have, the big question is why the cost? Why is it going to cost us that much? In other words, are we doing all we can during the bid process to keep the cost as low as possible? Since these streets don't have the curb, don't seem to have the curb issues per se and don't seem to have the sidewalk issues per se, that's one of the big concerns that I think all the residents have is what really is the cost and what are we paying for? And since it is a long-term project, it's a long-term repair and that's what it's intended to be, I guess we would encourage the, the council to look at as many different options of financing as possible. As I understand it, you're going to be probably issuing some bonds or looking along those lines. I would encourage the city that if you are issuing bonds, that you don't put a 2% additional rate on top of the bond so that the homeowner is stuck with a 5.5% or 6% or 6.5% rate of interest, but rather you match it more closely to the bond payout itself so that it's as cheap as possible, particularly for the older residents, to incur the cost and make the The other concern and question we would have is that if in fact the city maintains a sewer and water fund, did the city have such a fund in the past for the roads? And if in fact it had such a fund, should it consider introducing such a fund to take care of these problems?
Prohibited by state law.
Finally, one of the concerns we have is just, I'll be brief.
Thank you.
We would ask that the city do all it can to limit the ingress and egress and assist those older residents with all the different things that they have to do with groceries, repairs, and whatever.
Thank you, Mr. Riker. I'll talk a little bit when we're finished about our adventures at the legislature trying to establish a street utility, so. Anyone else from Viking Hills neighborhood? Or you don't have to be from Viking Hills neighborhood, certainly come forward and speak to this project.
But let's be clear, we're going to have a public hearing time for the next neighborhood too, so...
Yeah, we are. Well, they know that.
Okay. Well, I didn't know. That sounded like a general invitation, so.
All right. Let me be clear about that. Let me, yeah, you do not have to be from the Viking Hills neighborhood to comment on the Viking Hills project.
My name is Charles Hannah. I live at 6510 Gleason Court and I'm somewhat pleased that I don't live on Viking Hills. But on Gleason Court, we're faced with some similar issues. If you'll recall the map, a portion of that roadway is fronted by twin homes. On the other side of the roadway, it is not. Whether that property on the south side is, belongs to the association or whether it belongs to the city of Edina or whether it belongs to the state, I don't know. But the, the way the assessment was, was parceled out on Gleason Court, it appears that the 25 or 26 homes are assuming the cost for the entire project. Someone raised the question about whether an overlay or some surface improvements could be made and in all due respect to Jack Sullivan, he cited both France Avenue and Blake Road. Well, I can assure you that France Avenue and Blake Road are high-density traffic streets and do not compare with any of these roadways that are in the discussion tonight. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Mr. Sanders. All right, anyone else? Is there a motion? I see no one coming forward and I hear no one expressing a desire to come forward and speak regarding this proposed matter. Is there a motion to close the public hearing? If you moved in second to be closed the public hearing, discussion, all those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close say nay. Carry. All right, let's...
I've got some questions. You have some questions?
You can go ahead and I'll look at mine. You start.
Okay. There was a question on size of cul-de-sac and, and number of homes on it. And I know we did a number of cul-de-sacs off of the Frontage Road just south of this area last year and some of them had few houses on it. Do you remember either Director Cool or, or Mr. Sullivan? There were some that maybe had four or five houses, if I remember, two of them, I think.
That's correct. There was McCully Terrace neighborhood, McCully and Post Lanes. And McCully Terrace had four, five, I think, three existing homes, one of which was a twin home, two of which were a twin home and then a couple of vacant lots as well.
Right.
The other one was a little bit larger, but was about 10 to 15 homes, I believe, in that range.
And then there was some concern about seniors living on that, this particular dead end. And we do have a policy for senior deferment process and if they didn't attend your meeting or if that didn't come out, could you please explain that now?
Certainly. Excuse me, there's, the city council allows, or through the city process, we have four ways for repayment of these assessments. The first one is to pay the entire amount off next fall at the final assessment hearing. The second option is to pay some percentage of the overall amount and let the remainder roll to the county for taxes for collection. The third option is let the entire amount go to the county for, for collection. And the fourth amount is that the council, through the city assessing department, has a, a policy for age and income requirements that would be in relationship to the assessment amount that a homeowner has the potential of deferring any payment on that parcel until the property changes hands. It would, at that time or throughout the process, still gain or collect interest. However, the principal in interest could be deferred until ownership is transferred.
And let me make a date clear. It was, it's the fall of 2013 that this starts, not a year, I mean, a year from this last fall. Okay. We also have a printed bond cost policy. So we have always dealt with that issue in the same way consistently. Let's see, there was the average cost in the last few years. Our street reconstruction has fluctuated, I think, from what I've seen, even for one REU, from anywhere from five up to $20,000 per house in the east, the western side of Country Club. Is that correct?
That is...
But our average seems to fall somewhere between six and 10 in the seven years I've been sitting here probably.
And that would be a fair generalization of, of the varied assessments over the last six years.
Okay.
Good. One of the issues that's popped up again, I think, you thought the property adjacent to Vernon Hills Road is owned by Mindot. Mr. Hope wonders, based on the conversations he may have had with some of staff, some of your staff, whether it's not owned by the city of Edina. So would, would you make sure that you go through that effort to carefully look at that ownership issue because we certainly want to be taking on our share of responsibilities if, if we have some.
Yep. Mr. Mayor and Council, on projects that have city property adjacent to a, to a roadway project, is that, what we look at is, is there any activity on, on that property similar to what we've looked at for parks in the past, like Coteen Park, Todd Park, Highland Park, Ernestson Acres? We look at that, we look at what activities that's producing since our, our special assessment policy is based on trip generation. So it, it would have to have an activity generated from that parcel. We, the way we look at, the methodology that we use for that is that we look at what the activity levels are. We check with the park and rec department, see what they have. We relate it back to the, to the, the amount of trips per day that a residential equivalent would be used. And then we also look at, could that be subdivided up into lots when, when that roadway was built, could have been platted? And then we take the higher number of that. In this case, the, the property or the boulevard area to the, to the freeway fence is actually right-of-way. It's a 60-foot right-of-way through there. There is actually not a city property that you could subdivide into, to potential lots that would justify assigning trips or, or use to those, to that, to that property there.
Okay. Thanks for the clarification. Both Mr. Hope and Mr. Peter mentioned that townhouses are not covered in the assessment policy of the city of Edina. I take it's not something we should address as well?
Yes, we can do that.
And we can address that in, we can address that in the gap period here.
That's correct, ma'am. All right.
Let's see. Let's see. And Mr. Peter was concerned about the process of notification, and I thought we should take a look at, or visit with you a little bit about the notice that you gave and the citizen engagement processes that you used. I think we've refined those over the years that, I've been involved in this process, where it seems to work pretty well. I'm wondering what happened here? Are there people that missed the chance to go to a meeting exactly? Could you tell us a little bit about the citizen engagement process?
With most of our projects, our citizen engagement process starts two years prior. In this case, the neighborhood, or the streets of Pola and Arctic, were invited in the September of 2010 as a two-year heads-up to this meeting or to this ultimate date that we are here this evening. As I stated, we didn't involve Glacier, Gleason, or Vernon Hills at that time. Then in 2011, September timeframe, did invite those individuals in for a broad overview of what we do with the city, why, what policies and procedures we follow, why we've picked their neighborhood. That was then followed up with a neighborhood informational meeting, where we got more information just on their streets and talked in more detail about the assessment amounts. And that was the time that we talked about the assessment about amounts being, I'll say, close to what they are proposed tonight. They're about 10% or so less than what's being proposed tonight on average. And that typically, and then through that process, we also have questionnaires that we send out to the residents. Obviously, have our internet, our website that individuals can go to. We have a City Extra one-way email list, sir, that at this point doesn't get a lot of use, although we did post this meeting on that City Extra as well as the feasibility report. And hopefully through that process, we've had the ability to inform residents about what an REU is, why we do this procedure, what the timelines are, what the range of dollar amounts may be for assessments, and then worked away to more detailed information. I will admit that the letter on December 21st and December 23rd is confusing and is not how we intended that to work. But I believe leading up to that point, the information was accurate, consistent, and tried to get as much information out to the public as possible.
Thank you. Mr. Peter also mentioned, and I think sort of implicitly, that the road that they live on is only about 18 years old. And I think you touched on this briefly in your main presentation, but what would create such a poor pavement condition index on an 18-year-old, 18-year-old road? What are the different factors that could cause that? And how do we expect to stop that from happening in the future if this council should approve this project?
Well, I'm speculating a lot of this because it's hard to kind of recreate how a road got to where it is today. However, looking back through the historical as-built records, aerial photos, and the soil borings that we have of the area now, it is, it is my proposal that the roadway was built with a substandard or a different aggregate base than what we'd use today. We're 20, 30 years in the future, we have a different standards. During the time, it was probably a standard roadway-based material. It's no longer a standard of Mendots today. Secondly, the roadway was built in 81 and quickly capped, I believe with two inches of block top, which is great for holding the surface together, keeping the rainwater erosion from causing problems. However, long-term, two inches in Minnesota isn't quite enough to bridge a long-term access. I believe that the road was, that two inches of block top was used to travel on by all the construction activities to build all of the homes in that area. And then the last thing, the contractor that was in the neighborhood was responsible for doing was paving that final two inches of block top to make the road look nice. I think that two inches, in my opinion, with an outdated subgrade condition, two inches of asphalt for, from 1981 to the early 90s, the mid 90s, with construction activities, has led to a substructure failure that the two-inch cap that's put over the top was a cosmetic fix that has now lasted that from 93-ish to today. That's my opinion, that's kind of the opinion of our soils engineer, but obviously we're piecing some things together there. And like I said, there again, pavement types, pavement mixtures have also changed over the years, which have, some perform very well and some underperform.
All right, thank you. Mr. Reichert raised some interesting points. I thought, one was, at least I heard implicit in his request, was that if the project cost on the bid actually exceeds what your estimate is, be careful about not going above, he used a $7,000 figure, but I think the underlying point was if we make improvements, keep the cost at an absolute minimum. And what's our strategy for doing that?
Certainly, with every project, we look at ways to get the best long-term solution for the roadway at the most inexpensive or cost-effective design. So each roadway that we're approaching, we do the upfront analysis, the soil borings, things like that. And that data has been coming in over the last three or four months to help congeal to our costs that we're proposing tonight. But like I stated earlier to Mr. Reichert, is that we do have some contingency dollars built into that. There's always the unforeseen things, when, kind of similar to when you do a home remodel type work, you don't know what you get, you tear into the wall. Part of that is the same thing here, so we have a little bit of contingency dollars that we hope not to have to use, and that is one of the biggest cost savings that we see as we move forward. But there again, we'll, when the bids go out and the bids get returned here, we'll go over those bids and make sure we have a qualified, competent builder, construction company for the work. And obviously, we look at the dollar amounts that we're anticipating, do the roadway work for, and make sure it's consistent with, consistent or below what we're anticipating and estimating this evening.
All right, good. There were some financing, he just, Mr. Reichert again, asked about financing options, and I think we've got a pretty good methodology on that. I don't know if our, is there a finance director here?
No.
I don't know if you'd wish to comment on it. Manager Neil, how we typically go about financing these roadway improvements?
We do. We finance these projects just like we do a regular municipal geo-bond financing. We have the, as a AAA credit-rated city, we receive the lowest possible interest rates that the market allows typically, and right now, those are generally in the 2% range for some of our bonds. We do have the increment between what we pay and what we charge, and that increment is set by council action.
I think we also had the question of why don't we charge everybody in the city for projects so that everyone pays a little? And I can at least give my experience, because when I first started on council, we also charged for curb and gutter. So the street reconstruction projects that came before me were actually higher. They were 11, 12, 13, 14. We changed that policy, and when we changed that policy, it changed overnight. So anyone that had had a project that was finished the month before still paid for their curb and gutter, and then everyone who came before us, I mean, even like tonight, once the policy changed, didn't. I know we looked at that time at Minnetaka, who was charging for, generally for streets in their taxes, their taxes are, by the way, considerably higher than ours today. And they were starting to run out of money to do street reconstruction because the costs, as you know, of gasoline actually affect the cost of asphalt. And they were being able to do less and less projects, and they were trying to figure out a way to get around that, and what were they going to do to charge their, each resident more for the project? At that time, we decided not to do that. So that was probably, well, six years ago, that we did that study. We have to prove by law that by putting down new asphalt and charging you for the street part of it, that it actually is an advantage to your house of that amount of money, which we have done through study. And that's been proved a number of different times over the years nationally, too. So yes, it's a decision of the council as a whole to do it this way. Will that change in the future sometime? Who knows? But when it changes, it doesn't go back.
I tend to doubt that it will change, frankly. I mean, some council decades ago decided to use the special assessment methodology as opposed to the Minnetaka or St. Louis Park or Burnsville methodology of spreading the cost across the city in a general levy sort of way. So you run into this problem of, do you want to be on the council when you have that bright line set? And last year, your neighbor's over on Interlock and, or on View Lane, and Schaefer paid $8,000, and now this year, you got off for a few bucks on your utility bill? It's a tough one. It's a tough one to know, to think about, and I think councils have decided just to stay with what the tradition was. And it's no fun to be the person living in your house when this happens. It's happened to me, it's happened to you, you know, it's going to happen to Mr. Sprague, Councilmember Sprague on 70th Street, that's coming to a neighborhood near you, and you're, and now it's at your neighborhood. So also, Mr. Reichert raised the issue of a street utility, and that, you know, at least personally, I thought that was a great idea a few years ago. We trotted over to the state legislature with Minnetaka and some other cities. As Member Swenson mentioned, Minnetaka still wasn't deriving enough revenue off its general levy to pay for the road improvements. And so I think it was Bloomington, Edina, Minnetaka, went over to the state legislature and asked if we could establish a street utility, just like we have for water and sewer, where we could assess people, you know, $5.25, $10.25, and build up this fund to do these street improvements over time, knowing that we'd still face that bright-line test somewhere, but it would be at least permissible. And we just got shot down something fierce. Two years in a row, we tried it and it didn't work. So we're left with this very difficult situation where we need to have sound infrastructure, and we've got to make these tough decisions, as Mr. Hope said. Tough for you, tough on us, too. Member Brindle.
There was one other point made by Bill Peter, which is one of those tough realities, and that is that if you've lived in your home one year, and it comes up that the street reconstruction is coming to a neighborhood near you, that you share in the assessment, and it doesn't matter that you haven't been there 18 years, or how long you've been there, it just, it comes when it comes, and it comes to every one of us. So it does not have anything to do with how long you have lived at that dwelling.
All right, we've had a good discussion up here. Is there a motion?
I will move item 6A, the Viking Hills Neighborhood Street Reconstruction.
If you move the second, will we approve, on a preliminary basis, the Viking Hills Neighborhood Street Reconstruction Improvement VA 386, embodied in Resolution 2012-10? Further discussion?
Just, oh, go ahead. Yeah. I would like the issue of the twin home, townhome, and understanding from our attorney that we do have the ability to look at, continue to look at that issue, and supporting Member Sprague's well-reasoned suggestion or proposal earlier that we develop policy that applies across the board in the specific situations, and makes it really clear to residents where their housing fits and what their liability is going to be, how it's going to be calculated.
Thank you for that comment. Do you want to add it as a, in addition to that?
Take that up by a separate motion from the street reconstruction project?
How would you like that?
Or just staff direction?
Okay.
Either way, staff direction.
Okay. I think they understand that.
All right, thank you.
Member Brindle.
Thank you for that. I would add that if a letter goes out, if a letter goes out that is different than a letter that a resident just previously received, or previously received, that everything about the letter is the same except the date or the dollar amount, particularly the dollar amount, I would look at, why is a second letter going out? And maybe there should be cause for pause before the first letter goes out. And because it does create confusion, and it does shine a light on, gee, what are they doing over there? And I'm not, I don't want to be looked at that way, and I don't think anybody does.
Okay, thank you. All right, this requires a roll call, so let's start the roll.
Member Brindle.
Aye.
Member Sprague.
Aye.
Member Swenson.
Aye.
Member Bennett.
Aye.
Mayor Houghler. Aye. Thank you for your input. It was very valuable, and we really appreciate it. So thanks for coming in tonight and caring about your town and your neighborhood. All right, next matter before us is the public hearing involving the proposed special assessment for Valley State's Neighborhood Street Reconstruction Project VA 387. Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. This feasibility study and public hearing will follow very similar in context to the previous one, where we talked about how we rate the streets, the pavement condition index, same, or very similar public process that was talked about through this project as well. And we'll touch on some of the highlights of what we're proposing to do in the neighborhood tonight, and open it for questions at the end. This is our Valley State's Neighborhood, which consists, it's located just southeast of Creek Valley School, elementary school. Off to the east would be Nine Mile Creek to the northeast, and then the high school to the southeast, and Gleason Road to the west. It's made up of Nordic Circle, Creek Valley Road, Baldur, and Scandia, and Nordic Circle again, there on the east end. This project was initiated by staff as with the previous project, based on the pavement condition index and some of the utility upgrades that we'd like to do in the neighborhood. It was built in the early 60s. We've done normal pavement maintenance on this one as well. However, the pavement's now approaching 50-plus years old and is showing its wear, showing its age. And through this process, through this engagement process, we've had a couple of, actually a large percentage of the neighborhood, sign a petition that was received by council asking that the project not move forward. That's shown in the feasibility report, and we can talk in more detail if you'd like to about the number of individuals. One of the graphics kind of shows the proximity of those residents, where they lived, and some of their concerns with the project, with the project moving forward. We do recognize that there's a lot of backyard drainage issues in this location. The homes that are kind of between Scandia Road and Nordic Circle, in this kind of general vicinity, have a lot of rear yard drainage that kind of rains to the middle and then to the north, creating a backyard springtime drainage issue. And we do know there's some sanitary sewer needs that need to be looked at out there as well as the water main. Couple of examples of pavement condition. This is a curb and gutter neighborhood. It's got some notable curb and gutter in the entire neighborhood, 31-feet-wide road today. And you can see the cracking, the alligatoring of the intersections of the roadway itself, and just showing the pavement wear. Staff is proposing to leave the curb and gutter in place. However, there's a larger percentage than on a previous project that will need to be removed and replaced based on a settlement and the heaving and settlement due to some of the soil that are out there as well. However, we'll keep those curb and gutter pieces back in the same location, move the asphalt, move the gravel surface below it, and put a new road bed back down. The 2008 Capri Enza plan did not indicate any need for sidewalk in this neighborhood. However, we'll talk about what our proposal is in just a minute here. The Transportation Commission did recommend installing a segment of sidewalk, and the school district also had suggested, it's a purple line shown in the graphic here, it would be from Gleason over to the intersection of Nordic and Creek Valley. The rationale for that was that, from the school district's side and also from the Transportation Commission's side, after much dialogue and discussion was had, is that this seems to be a good location where students who are walking up Gleason from the southeast in the sidewalk tend not to go all the way up and access the school off of the Gleason entrances to the north. They tend to go up Nordic, and then up that kind of concrete back driveway that goes up and in. Kind of hard to see at this scale. Kind of hard to see at this scale, I apologize, but kind of access more from this direction. I've actually had some separate meetings with the school district and the principal to talk about the confusing pick up and drop off and other activities that happen at this general location. So trying to get the students to avoid having to come all the way up and access the school and through here, because this tends to be the most congested area and most unsafe area. So to have them actually utilize some more of this back entrance way. Through the discussion, we thought it wasn't practical just to stop the sidewalk gap that access to bring it all the way to the corner, thus helping to kind of pick up a little bit of the walkers and maybe making the way west on Creek Valley as well. In addition to the curb and gutter replacement, spot replacement, the new pavement and road subgrade, we have some sanitary sewer spot repairs. This has been televised this fall, recognized in some areas that needs some improvements as well as the hydrants and gate valves, again, like the previous project. They're 50, 60 years old. We want to make sure those operate when we need them to operate. So we'll be making improvements to those. And then the storm sewer, we talked a little bit about that. There's some of that rear yard drainage that's of a concern. And also, there was some discussion about some of the drainage that kind of comes from the northwest corner of the project up by the school. And maybe it could be some of that water captured in storm sewer before it, so it doesn't travel so far over land down the gutter line. This project is, here again, it's only one accessible area, not like the previous project, where we had a number of accessible areas. So those street improvements and the bottoms that residents will be paying for is at $760,000. The sanitary sewer, we estimate around $60,000 from the sanitary sewer fund. Water main at $80,000 and storm sewer at about $150,000. Here again, it'd be some pump, some pump drain tile installation and some storm sewer network upgrades that account for that rather large percentage of the $150,000. And here again, this is about 30% of the project cost, as we kind of talked about in the previous one. The accessible lots in this area are very similar to how we talked about the last project, based on a REU, single family home is considered a one REU. In this case, all the homes are estimated at $9,000 per REU. The school district, ISD 273, is accounting for five of the residential equivalency units. And that's kind of shown in this yellow graph to the north. This is a unique piece of land. The fact that the vast majority of this is really kind of, I would say, the yellow portion is really related to the soccer fields to the north and the access and the soccer and other field activities that happen there. When staff took a look at this, as Director Huo mentioned previously, we look at how a site is used and we look, try to tend to take a look at, is it buildable lots or is it the use of the area? And when we took a look at this one, when you average out the use of the soccer fields throughout the year, the five REUs using it as a home, as homes are actually have a higher rate than averaging out a soccer field use in November, December, January, February, March, April, and even into early May. So the soccer fields get a very intense use for a very short amount of time, but when you average it over the year, it actually work out to be less than, assuming five single family homes could be built on that same area. And this is really talking about the area that kind of wraps this semicircle around here. This area was left out because that's kind of actually school access that is more related to this parcel of their land over here. Here again, follow a very similar schedule, where actually a full year ago, in 2010, we invited them to the first open house meeting. Invited them back again this year in 2011 in September. Held the neighborhood informational meeting in November, council order in December. Here for the hearing this evening and on the same schedule as before, bidding preferably in late March, early April, award the contract and start construction. Once the spring frost is out of the ground and the utility companies have a chance to do their improvement work. Wrapping the project up, hopefully early summer before school actually would start back in session here and then the final assessment hearing for the fall of 2013. I will, I guess I'll back up just for a minute and touch a little bit more on another issue related to this Nordic Circle area and the soccer fields. A lot of the questionnaires came up with discussion about parking, the parking concerns that had derived from the soccer field and the application there, that the parking out there there isn't large enough and it gets inundated and what kind of parking should be allowed, what kind of parking restrictions should be looked at out there. Staff sent a separate questionnaire out to the residents who, everyone who is actually either on Creek Valley into the north, so all these homes on the south side of Creek Valley all the way up, and asking them, do you think it's a problem? What would you recommend? We have, we gave them a couple of options. Resident side parking only, no parking, excuse me, no parking on the resident's side, no parking on the soccer field side, or leave it as is. And the responses were pretty varied. None of them really floated to the top. So at this point, staff has recommended we just move forward with the project as stated. If parking continues to be a concern, or actually raises to be a bigger concern, we would address it in another questionnaire that we could work through the traffic safety committee at a later date. However, the results were so mixed at this point, I didn't feel it was appropriate to make a recommendation regarding limiting certain parking during certain days or hours of the week at this time. So with that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Sullivan, Member Swenson, and then Member Sprague.
On the east, can you put the map up?
Yes.
It'll be advantageous to you to have it. On the east side of Creek Valley Road where it kind of butts into the high school and there's sort of the Ho Chi Minh Trail up the hill, is there, I read something about how you wanted to treat that end of the street and then is there any reason that the sidewalk that you're putting in, which I support, shouldn't continue on till that, into that stub? Or is that not something that the school district supports as a way to get to school and to the lower fields?
Well, first, our recommendation for that area, Member Swenson, is to continue the curb and gutter straight to remove all the asphalt that's back there. We would put some type of trail system back in. My, at this point, we're recommending some kind of environmentally friendly type of service, like a grassy paper, something that we could still access emergency vehicles on. Our police department and obviously ambulance or emergency vehicle could access over if they wanted to. However, it'd be a grass surface, something green. It would still allow the foot traffic to utilize that area. We talked a little bit about should the sidewalk extend? There was some discussion maybe the sidewalk should kind of ring itself around the top here.
Yeah, when I drove it today, there were a bunch of kids sliding right where you just started your red thing. There were a couple of hills there and they were having, actually, they were having a ball. I was sort of jealous that I was coming to this meeting and they were out sliding. And luckily, they don't slide towards the street, because that was sort of the first thing I looked at, but those mounds lend themselves to go back down towards. And I know that the street going into the school, it says no trucks are driving or something allowed on it. So that's the back way into the school. I did contemplate going around Nordic Circle too, because it gets to the park and I thought Nordic Circle was a good name, because all the Nordic skiers actually were back there practicing today. But yeah, I just, you know, we have kind of one good opportunity to make things safer. And I know this is a dead end area that doesn't get tons of traffic, but it kind of goes into a whole area where there's potentially going to be a bike trail and a walking trail. And does it make sense to then support a sidewalk that gets the neighborhood to that area?
Well, and that's something we discussed too. And I think from a staff perspective, where I came from, was that I'm not quite sure the alignment of that Nine Mile Creek trail to the connection point, you know, how it would connect. And my concern was, at this point, installing something that may be not inconsistent with the future planning of that area connectivity wise. Certainly would entertain the option of working with the school district on maybe getting that sidewalk further to the east if you talk over to this area. We have not had good, in-depth discussions on that. Staff could certainly do that. Now, the segment you're talking about though was kind of within this.
Well, I have two segments. I contemplated the Nordic Circle one, the one that you drew on the curve, and then the, just the continuation of the Creek Valley Road to the east.
And both options are certainly available. I don't think either one of them is precluded from being constructed based on constraints on the site. We just felt that, I guess Transportation Commission kind of gave that as their first recommendation. Staff kind of agreed to it that, yeah, it's a good starting point. What do we do as we move around the corner is yet to be determined. And I would ask for input for sure.
Sure. You know, part of it, I know Member Brindle pushes for safe routes to parks and fields along with safe routes to school. And I support her on that. So this was just an opportunity. We also, in the comments from people, you pointed out between Scandia Road and Nordic Circle, the drainage issues. I know we had an issue just south of the library and senior center, where we had a cul-de-sac that had a drainage issue and we worked with the neighbors to help them figure out a way to get the water out of there better. Is this, for either of you, right, rise up to that level of need? Because I, I mean, I remember discussing it and I remember at the end when we actually assessed the comments from the residents, how pleased they were as to how the water in their backyards was finally solved. But that might have been a different situation.
This is very similar, where the original design of the neighborhood graded a swale, everything graded the backyard and drained north. Over time, people plant trees, the roads start to kind of rise up. You have a number of maybe sheds or other structures, garages that go in and change the drainage patterns. This is very similar in that regard. And we, yes, we have talked with the residents and said, will they be able to bring the storm sewer network up to the right of way at that point that kind of showed there where the backyard's kind of connecting to. And then from that point forward, we're going to ask that the homeowners take on part of the responsibility of extending that network to the south on the private property. But we would give them some of the ability to connect into that. We'd even, staff would even be willing to work with those individuals to look at some elevations and see what they can do. The group you referred to, the Richmond Hills neighborhood, they did that on, the original Richmond Hills, not the one we're going to see in a couple of weeks, Richmond Hills Park. They did that on a weekend where they went to Menards and got some of the pipe work and got a number of shovels. And I think they got the families out there and made a working event out of it. And yes, it made a big change.
Right, but we worked with them in advance.
Yeah, and we would do the same thing.
They didn't just design what they were going to do in a vacuum.
Yep, and we would do the same thing here. And I've indicated that staff would be willing to provide any assistance that we could in kind of talking that through.
Okay. I'm done.
Member Sprague.
Yes, just wanted to talk PCI for a moment, because I see some of these scores are a little bit higher, but the average for the neighborhood is?
29.
29. And it says here, these were taken in June of '09. So would you expect some further degradation? How quickly do these come down usually?
Yeah, without a doubt. I didn't put the current data in here, at least in this map here. I'm actually believe the 29 that you're referring to in the feasibility report is the current data that we would assume that we took in this fall.
That's the aggregate for the neighborhood.
Yeah. So you're down to a 29 or so. You know, we talked a little bit at the beginning of this presentation this evening about the fact that we do this PCI. We can't take every street that's at the bottom of the barrel. Reason being is that we only have a limited amount of funds that we can utilize per year. And we have to get some small projects, some big projects, some different sized projects. And we need to be careful where we're working in our community too, to pace ourselves in an area. And so that's one of the other factors that goes into here. Certainly, the pavement condition is poor enough that it should be done, but we also have to look at some large neighborhoods, which you'll be seeing in two weeks, and then some of these smaller neighborhoods, to kind of fill in that funding, to get us to that funding cap that we're always kind of working with internally. So this is a good sized neighborhood for that. It meets the criteria and helps to round out that dollar amount that we're looking for.
Okay. I think, I think you asked all my questions. In terms of the sideways sidewalk segment that Member Swenson was talking about, if, I can see where, because of the alignment of the trail, we're unclear as to where to connect around Nordic Circle on the school property side. But if we're going to go straight down and across, wouldn't now be the time to do that in the right of way? Because we're not, no longer on school property, we're in the right of way.
It certainly would. I guess from the opinion of economy as a scale, getting there, doing the work once, being done with the project. It's good to note here too, that the residents, our neighborhood informational process and the way that this works is that Transportation Commission sees the feasibility reports prior to council, but after the neighborhood informational meeting. So a lot of these neighbors are unaware of the sidewalk inclusion, at least it hasn't been made. We hadn't informed them at the information meeting, because we didn't know that information at the time. So this is the first time that residents may be hearing about that in this feasibility report. So I guess I would, I would just state that it may hear some discussion tonight from the public that they weren't aware of that. And that's true, they haven't been aware of this. This is something that's been kind of percolating after those informational meetings. So you may want to take their input.
Okay, thank you.
Member Brindle.
I have a couple of things. On the PCI, what did you say the average is?
The average is down to a 29 in the neighborhood.
You mean that's a current average or do you mean that's an average of the numbers I see in front of me?
That should be the average of the neighborhood today, because most of which, the map you've seen towards the end of the packet from dated 609 or 62009, it's got numbers in the 30s and the 40s and the 50s.
Right.
And if, in 27s, 32s, yes, so those are the, those are the rated averages when it was inspected. The 29 is what we're, what we anticipate the roadway to be today.
Okay, well, I have driven the area and I guess I have trouble real, understanding at the surface of the road anyway, that there's a problem, because the roads are as good or better than the roads where I live. So it's a little tough for me to understand why this has to happen right now, but my real question is, there is a letter dated October 19th from a resident named Mike Slaughter, and he lives at 6625 Nordic Drive. And he has a couple of points in the middle of his letter. And point number three says, "The utilities have more than 34 years of useful life remaining based on statements from Jack Sullivan." If that's true, then why is this project needed now?
Well, I will agree that there's still useful life left in the utilities. And that's one of the reasons why we're not doing a wholesale approach on replacement of the utilities here, just a rehabilitation to existing infrastructure that we have. As we kind of say with the last project, the underground utilities are in acceptable condition. There's some areas that need to be rehabbed, but for the most part, those are in acceptable condition and will have a longer lifespan, 40, 50 years more. The pavement, however, we believe is starting to, an aggregate of the utility improvements that are due or should be required and the pavement conditions, so tell us or recommend to us that this should be an area that should be looked at for surface replacement. And while we're doing the surface replacement, we'll make those upgrades in the underground utilities. So yes, typically, typically utilities will last 80 to 100 years and depend on what utility it is. And, but pavement's going to be lasting that 30 to 40 range. So you're going to have to replace the pavement a couple of times before you get to the utility replacement in most cases.
Do you know when the last time was that there was just a melon overlay on this?
I don't believe there has been a melon overlay on this roadway. I believe there was a chip seal. I don't have the date in front of me. I apologize, but.
Okay. I do, I do understand that there are improvements that are necessary with regard to drainage, particularly from the information in front of me. I haven't gotten, gone over and measured Scandia Road to see what the measurements and what the improvements need to happen there. I trust that they need to happen, because we've got several letters about that. So can those improvements be made without a full reconstruction?
In my opinion, it is difficult to make the drainage, all the drainage improvements that are, that would be beneficial to the neighborhood without, without major impacts to the pavement surface in certain locations.
In certain locations.
It wouldn't be a wholesale, you know, but yes, I would believe there'd be enough areas that would need to be replaced or reconstructed that you would start to look, maybe a patchwork to a certain degree. And that's not the best way to describe it, but it would have some old, new, old, new kind of look to it.
Okay, that's fine.
Thank you.
Oh, I have one more and one. In here, there's something that refers to in the ETC minutes, which is the Transportation Commission. There's a recommendation to remove the stump street. What's a stump street?
I apologize, it's probably a typo. It should be probably stub street. And that would be that location, we were talking about the very east end, as you work your way down Creek Valley Road, is it dead ends into the, I guess, the lower fields of the high school there. The road is about 100, 150 feet long and it goes nowhere, it's got a chain across and has a sign that says no dumping and no motor vehicles down there.
Oh, I see. Oh, I see.
We, we're planning to remove that. Obviously less pavement would be, less, less cost to go back in, less maintenance activities, less stormwater runoff type of activities. We'd still have some accessibility there for emergency vehicles, public works, maintenance vehicles, I have to get back to, we do have our sanitary and storm sewer lines that run back there that do need maintenance from time to time. So we want to make sure we have key access back there. We wouldn't plant it full of trees and make it inaccessible, but we would certainly look to remove that in the configuration that it's, it doesn't go anywhere, there's no driveways on it, it's pavement that really doesn't probably need to be repaired.
Well, kind of, it kind of goes to the trail that goes, works its way up to that parking lot of the high school.
Right, I understand what it is.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm done.
Thank you. Member Brindle.
A question, another question about PCI and that is, thank you for the detailed map. It is really helpful to have the visual as well as the explanation of PCI. Looking at the mapped points of measurement from 2009 and their multiple, I noticed that there's a 25-point span between best condition and worst condition. In an instance like that, what, what is best practice? Some of the numbers are obviously clearly below the reconstruction number, the threshold for reconstruction. A couple of them, several, I think three in particular are at that threshold or slightly above.
From a staff perspective, we, we look at that and, and say that, well, aggregately speaking, this neighborhood is low enough that it should all be done, that it would be, wouldn't be very cost effective to go in and do nine tenths of the neighborhood and then come back and do the, the remaining street or streets at a later date. I guess our, our suggestion is that the segment that is at a 52, when it was rated 2009 and the 45 are, although they're part of the neighborhood, are not as big a portion when you look at it collectively. And I think our goal is to get in, do the work once, disturb the neighborhoods once, the residents once. Hopefully, economy of scale will get them the best price, get us all the best price for doing the work and leave before school starts, right around school starts in 2012 and not have to be back there doing major work for 40 years.
And then returning also again to the parking issue. As I read the survey responses, which were, it seemed to me a very high rate of return and it seemed to me that people were also very clear in their comments. So definitely the drainage issues identified and also the parking, and this may be why the survey results on specifically on the parking on that second survey were so varied. It appears to be an episodic problem that's related to the use of the fields and people who are there to use the fields, parking on the street rather than in the lot that's connected to the school. Is there a way to work with the park and recreation department, work with the soccer association to make sure that player, the parents of players are educated and they know that the lot is really where they should be parking, that it'll interfere less with the day-to-day operations of the neighborhood while those games are going on? Probably safer for the kids getting out and certainly safer for people trying to walk in the neighborhood. And again, I think what people are probably less interested is restricting their own parking. People see when you close off parking on one side of the street or another. It's they and their guests who will be affected, not those three months of the year that, that's necessarily bugging. So what I'm looking for is a solution that doesn't deprive people of access to the parking that they need, but does address this problem that so many people identified.
Staff would be certainly willing to engage in the discussions with those various groups that you talked about, to see if there's some additional education that can be done to alleviate some of the concerns that the residents may have about the, the parking issues that develop during those scheduled events, without a doubt, yeah. And we've, we've talked about this in other jobs where kind of abutted schools and/or facilities like this and this would be another good example of getting back in front of them as a reminder of the soccer association, park and rec, that group. So staff would be certainly, would make that part of the, part of the project education.
Other questions? Mr. Sullivan.
Do we have any, do we have any drainage issues here that we need to deal with in a manner similar to what you did over in Richmond Hills where you had to actually do something in someone's yard in addition to the street or? Don't we face any issue like that over there?
Well, we're, we're approaching that issue and I think like we stated a little bit earlier, that we would run some storm sewer networks, some pump drain tile near the property line as it intersects there and, and work with the homeowners to extend that system out and get some of that water in a little sooner. We certainly would continue to work with the residents on that as we move through the spring design phase and then into construction this summer.
Okay. Anything else for? Yes, go ahead.
Would these be the type of projects? I noted from one resident's correspondence, I think it was a separate letter, that one resident had installed a rain garden in his own backyard at his own expense. I also know that the watershed districts, Minnehaha Creek Watershed and Nine Mile Creek Watershed have grants available that will match. There's usually a, a limit, there's usually an application period and they require a homeowner to match at least one to one. And usually the project cost exceeds the total of the residence, well, in any event, I think the grant may be up to about $1,000. The city, I understand, we will have a new water engineer if that position does not already exist. Can there be some coordination or at least a point of information in the engineering department where residents who want to install rain gardens to try to help address this issue can get some, at least that point of access or information to obtaining the grants?
Yes, without a doubt. I guess at this point, that contact person or, or department would be me. I'd be the first person they would talk to and certainly would be willing to share with them the information from, in this case, Nine Mile Creek Watershed to help them understand their possibilities for some funding mechanisms that they may be able to utilize for making improvements of their own site that would alleviate some of their issues.
When does that, when does that? Excuse me, when does that funding come out? It's reported in the first of the, first part of the year whether or not they refund the program, isn't that right? For, I'm talking about the Nine Mile Creek funds.
Yeah, I, I'm not familiar on the exact dates. We could certainly get that information back to you, but I know Nine Mile Creek, I think was up to 2,500, excuse me, Minnehaha Creek was up to 2,500 last year. When we went to the Gulf Terrace neighborhood, that was a discussion that was had and, yeah, typically those funds get reallocated every year and we could certainly confirm that information.
Member Brindle, I'm glad you brought up the rain garden notion. This, I don't know if it's this program, but there is a program that the city of Burnsville is taking advantage of and there are an extensive number of rain gardens through particular neighborhoods that just look beautiful and they serve a great, great purpose in terms of that filtration of water heading into the watershed. So, all right, good. I think you've answered council's questions. We're going to open this matter up as a public hearing. Folks, I tell you again, I think all of you were here when I mentioned earlier, you've got three minutes. The yellow light comes on, you've got 30 seconds and when the red light goes on, you ought to be wrapping up. It should be done. I'd like to see that simultaneously. So it's no fun to remind people your time is up, so try to monitor yourselves. So the public hearing's open. Come on up, give us your name and address. Tell us about your concerns or if you have any questions, we'll address them when you're done, when we're all done. Go ahead.
Thanks. I'm Mike Slaughter, 6625 Nordic Drive. You know, there's a couple of things I guess I want to talk about. The, the school sidewalk, I guess that decision was made with the school and the city. We weren't involved in that at all. So that was a surprise and I think there's a lot of people that are against that because they don't want the school buses lining up there picking up kids. You're shaking your head. Go ahead.
Well, let you, finish talking, we'll explain it later. I don't want to take your time.
Drainage issues, you know, it, it seemed like, to me, I was getting the feeling like there were some drainage issues that were going to be resolved. This amounted to a, I don't know what you call it, a catch right next to the gutter that would tie into the sewer and that's it. There's nothing going back for these people to get the water to that, so it's still going to be hung up. So a lot of the people that, you know, have drainage issues were happy to put their names on the petition because those things weren't going to be addressed. The PCI number, I guess the number that's being thrown around is 29 now. I wish those numbers would be made a little bit easier to find for us so we could, you know, be able to talk about numbers and, you know, so what was the number in 2005? Does anybody know that number? And how far has it fallen? How fast? And when did we get past the 45? You know, that was the time to mill an overlay. So how does a road go from, well, we're falling down. I'll pay attention to your light. But I guess the biggest thing is, we just spent a lot of time getting this petition put together. We had 86% of the people sign the petition based on the number of respondents. We had 61.2% of the neighborhood overall that believe the streets are in satisfactory condition. And I guess if you don't want to, well, I ask that you listen to what the neighborhood is saying or please let us know about what the petition should be because this is a, to me, this is a clear statement of what the neighborhood thinks. Thanks.
Thanks, Mr. Slaughter.
Mike, I'm sorry I interrupted you. Just go sit down. The sidewalk, let me explain before anyone gets up, else gets up, is just a walking sidewalk. It isn't for the school buses to stop and pick up kids or anything. It's strictly a walking sidewalk and I'm sorry I interrupted you if I interrupted your train of thought, so.
They're already stopping the road by the sidewalk, I would imagine, if this was the last stop.
Okay.
Folks, we can't, we can't, we can't get this on the record, so, sorry.
I thought she was addressing me.
Yep, I was apologizing, sorry.
Good evening, Dan. 6517 Nordic Drive. My mom said I didn't have a lot of common sense as a kid and hopefully I've gained a little bit more as I've gotten older. I got this first letter and I, I went out and looked at the streets and I, I couldn't believe I got the water. I, I don't understand the euphoria to move forward and to spend money in this economic times. Mr. Sullivan respectfully says we can get good deals. So in light of that, I put a petition together with Mike and few of the other folks, just not realizing the streets are not that bad. They're, they're nice streets. If they weren't nice, I'd be all for it. They're fine streets and where they get the, the numbers, I don't know. I'm an engineer in a different didactum. He can dazzle me with all the numbers he can do, the PTIs and the PCI's and the 29 to Mr. Sprague and to Ms. Brindle. These numbers represent what was in my head. It's the first time they've let them out of the box to me. The numbers represent nice streets. There's a parking issue with the soccer, somebody's going to get hurt. There's too many fields and not enough parking. There's no doubt about that. There's a drainage problem between the streets like Sullivan identified. There's not bad streets. These are not bad streets and I can emphasize that and that's why the numbers are what you pointed out, Ms. Brindle. So I would just ask you folks to look at these streets before you do anything. Easy for anybody to talk about somebody else's nine grand, it's my nine grand and I don't think we need to spend that kind of money on these streets whatsoever, so that's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Sullivan.
Units for the school property. I asked about this at the November 13 meeting.
Name, name and address, please.
I'm sorry, I'm Carol Krop. I live at 6200 Creek Valley Road. I asked about last, at the last November 2011, what the school would be using, how much the school property would be compensating us and was told only five REU units. The school usage is much more than this. The school allows the Dyna Park Board to use those four soccer fields. On any given night, there might be 100 cars per hour. There are four fields, 12 kids on a team, you can do the math. And they park in the soccer field or park on Nordic Circle between 4:45 and 7:00. This takes place the whole soccer season, Monday through Thursday. There are soccer practices on Saturday and Sunday that are unscheduled. In addition to that, the school parks school buses every day, has for years, on Scandia Road at the corner of Creek Valley at 11:35 a.m. and there are between one and three buses parked at 3:40 along Creek Valley just prior to Gleason Road, facing Gleason. If houses were built on school property facing Creek Valley and Nordic Circle, you could build 10 or 11 houses there. How is the school getting off with only responsibility for five? Many years ago, back around 1980, the school brought dump trucks full of gravel and dirt to build up the school fields behind the high school. Several acres were raised two, three feet and we were all concerned about one of them running over our children, but that wasn't a problem, but dump load trucks full. And then flatbed trucks came through down Creek Valley into that stub, cross the, and bringing in granite the size of Volkswagen Beetles. A lot of dirt was built, was used to fill in three small ponds that were on the property back in the 50s when the land was used by the Valley View riding stables. And it was situated where the church is on Antrim Road. These huge rocks now circle around the areas where the ponds used to be. So if there's any damage on Creek Valley Road, I think we all know where it came, a lot of it came from. I, I urge the city to look at how they're assessing the school for, at only five REUs. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Evening.
My name is Peter Scherbak, 6221. On Baldur Lane. I'm going to probably reiterate some of the things I already said, but I'll, I'll say them anyways because I feel pretty strongly about it. First of all, I'll just start by saying that, you know, I do appreciate all your hard work and, you know, I, I understand that you're trying to act in the best interest of the city and, and, you know, so all, all of my comments are meant with the utmost respect. But the fact of the matter is, you know, we don't want this. We don't. I mean, you know, to Mary's point, you know, you, you look at the roads, they just simply don't look that bad. And I agree with Dan's comments that in the middle of an economy that, you know, a lot of people are still struggling, I think asking for $9,000 is a lot. You can talk about how you can defer the money and older people don't have to pay it and all of that, but it is going to have to get paid at some point and that's, that's money that's going to come out of everyone's pocket. Yeah, I mean, I could get a great deal on a roof on my house right now, but I'm not going to put one on because I don't need it, right? So I'm going to keep the money in the bank and try to protect my family. We've gone to great lengths to try to, to try to demonstrate that. I think this, the project frankly seems a little bit ill-defined. I mean, I think we're here tonight to vote on a project that was estimated at around $9,000. With all due respect, Councilmember Sprague and Councilmember Swenson, it seems to me that we're sitting here tonight redesigning the whole thing right in front of us. We're talking about new sidewalks, we're talking about access to the back of the high school, we're talking about things that, that we never talked about before. And I guess I'm a little uneasy knowing that something is going to get approved, probably swiftly, when we don't even know what it is, right? And, and that's, you know, being discussed in overwhelming, you know, face of, you know, disapproval by the residents themselves. Councilmember Sprague, I vividly remember you standing at my front door a year or two ago when you were running for office, talking about how you were going to listen to the residents, you were going to try to support us and what we wanted to do. Well, this is what we want. We don't want this project. I agree with the comments about the park. You know, to assess five REUs seems preposterous to me. And the comment by Mr. Sullivan that it's only used for soccer is just flat out wrong. I mean, come, come to our neighborhood when there's school things going on. I mean, there, there isn't even beginning to be enough parking and so people overflow into our neighborhood. So it's not just the soccer, it's the school, the buses are there, the kids use it, it's heavily used by the school and to try to, to try to, you know, imply that that's not the case, I think is just flatly wrong. The soccer's a big issue. It's, it's a huge issue, right? And, and it is not, it, it isn't safe and frankly, if we are going to do something, then we should probably address that when we do it. And lastly, I agree that it's, it's kind of difficult to get our hands around the details of the scores, but I heard scores tonight anywhere ranging from the 50s, which are relatively acceptable, to the 20s. And I wonder how many of those low scores are close to that park, which is so heavily traveled, and the other scores which are acceptable are actually in the general residence of the neighborhood. So those are my remarks, thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Scherbak.
Hello, Gary Westner, 6602 Scandia Road. Just a few quick points and they really pertain to a key issue about transparency and I know this council is very concerned about transparency and public input. And one point is that the PCI numbers in many of our view is, are highly suspect and we've not been able to get good information about where those numbers came from and what, which roads they pertain to and how they compare to other neighborhoods. If you drive some other neighborhoods that I'm sure you have, such as Brookview Heights or Indian Hills, you'll notice that those streets are in much worse condition than ours. What I heard earlier today is that maybe we're just a fill-in project to round out the budget and I, I would object to that rationale. out the budget. And I, I would object to that rationale. Second of all, the whole issue of sidewalks is a total surprise to all of us. And I would be concerned if I were you about the transparency that that represents to the, the people of Edina. And I, when it was brought up earlier by Mr. Sullivan, I noticed that there were some heads turned on the council, and as there were in the audience. And I would be very concerned about going forward with a project where there's been such opaqueness and lack of transparency, where you're assessing us for projects that really are solving school issues and sewer and drainage issues, and kind of putting it under the guise of road reconstruction. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Westner.
I'm Terry Corup, sixty-two hundred Creek Valley Road. The sidewalk issue was quite a shock, especially because it was discussed, it was asked about more accurately, and we all said no. I grew up in a neighborhood of schools, sidewalks. I'm quite happy not having them. We have very light-traveled roads. Extending the, the sidewalk alongside the school may, in fact, serve school purposes. I'm not quite prepared to argue against that. I'm used to all the kids going over the hill or walking along, and, and somebody's gotta take care of it. School wants to plow it. That's, I guess, their business. Extending it beyond the sidewalk that is already there, if you will, in the middle of the block, leads into the playground area up to the school, makes no sense. We don't have sidewalks in the rest of development. We don't need them. Indian Hills doesn't have sidewalks. Quite honestly, I don't think they need them. To extend it over to the stub, as it's being called, the dead end, does happen to cut directly through my yard. I'm biased. I'll agree. I don't want it. I don't like it. We don't need it. It doesn't go anywhere. Extend out to the park. People can get to the park now. A few people do park in the stub. As far as turning it to a, I'll just say soft ground. I'm all for that. That's fine. To run a sidewalk there so you can walk on up to the school, the school is not maintaining the sidewalk from that point on. There was, there is an asphalt trail that goes two-thirds of the way. Used to run to a sidewalk or a stairway up to the school. They moved the stairway. It does not go there. Was never extended. And as they did all the work, moving all those concrete, or granite objects and all kinds of dirt and stuff, they didn't bother to take care of that walkway. Good share was now buried under mud sliding down the hill. They don't care about it. Why are we gonna even talk about building a sidewalk through my neighborhood over there? We don't need it. They don't even want it. I guess that's it for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, my name is Jerry Edwards, six-five-one-three Nordic Drive. My wife and I have lived at our residence for twenty-three years. During that period of time, we've been very impressed with the city services. We've had no reason whatsoever to guess, second-guess the city staff. During those twenty-three years, we've also invested tens of thousands of dollars in our home. And I don't believe we're unusual in our neighborhood. For that reason, I believe it's wise to also invest in the supporting road system in our neighborhood. I believe the road is in rather bad shape. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards.
My name's Jerry Tian.
Could you repeat your name, please?
Jerry, Jerry Tian.
Thank you.
And I'm living in sixty-two sixty, sixty-two twenty Balder Lane. The reason I'm coming over tonight, because I'm strongly against this project, simply because I don't see any necessary, you know, to reconstruct the, the street or road. Actually, I moved from Eden period to the Edina, you know. I'm looking for a better life, and then the quality of the life, especially, you know, our, the environment is, is very good. So compared to the Eden period, I think I'm, I might miss the, the Eden period. Anyway, yeah. Compared to, you know, the Eden period was built in the eighties, you know, late eighties. But, you know, compared to, to the, you know, the street I'm living right now, it's, it's much worse than, you know, than, than our Edina road. So, anyway, I mean, money is an issue, but it's, it's not the critical point. But my point is, is, you know, the, the purpose of a reconstruction road is, is not, I mean, it's, it's a waste of time and money. So, you know, I'm strongly against it. But speaking to the school, you know, I, I do support the school. I mean, maybe, you know, you, you can talk to a city or to, to, to a Mandat, you know, to think about, you know, extending the school parking stuff. But, but, you know, I don't see any reason to rebuild our street. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Tian. Anyone else? Mr. Mayor.
My name is Stacy Eisfeld. I live at sixty-two oh-nine Balder Lane. I am also against this project. Moving from South Minneapolis to Edina four years ago. The streets in, on Balder Lane are awesome. And after traipsing through South Minneapolis for sixteen years, I love everything about the city. I love the snowplows coming early in the morning, everything. So, but the streets are nice. We don't have, I don't think that we need to do this project. I'm very concerned about when Mr. Sullivan said that our project under the funding cap throw us in there to get to the funding cap. I'd like to know if that's, if we're a filler project, or what that really meant. And I signed the petition, and I agree with everything these other people have said. So I'll stop for now. Thank you.
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Eisfeld.
I'm Michelle Tressel, and I'm at six-six-two-zero Scandia Road. And we've lived in our home for three years. And my mother was just visiting, and she saw the, the paperwork from the city on my table, and she goes, "Are you kidding me? They're wanting to redo your roads?" I said, "Yeah." She goes, "Well, did you do a petition?" I said, "Yeah." She goes, "Do you think it's gonna do anything?" I said, "I have no idea. That's up to you guys to decide. We've all signed a petition, letting you know that our road is fine. We're all happy with our road. I don't know if a petition means anything here. We'll find out. But I just wanted to let you know, we love our neighborhood, and we're a very close neighborhood. We all have an email chain that we all send to each other. When somebody needs something for a school project, an email goes out to everyone. We're all very close, and we all agree that we don't need this project. So I'm hoping that you listen to us. Thank you."
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Is there a motion to close the public hearing? Move in second to be closed the public hearing, discussion. All those in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Close second, aye? Carrie. Let's see here. We got some questions. A couple of folks asked, "Are we a fill-in project?"
I'm not sure exactly what that means, but I think I kinda get the gist of it, is that they, they think you're doing other projects in the neighborhood, and you're just trying to fill in some kind of an agenda here for a, a complete project for the, for the two thousand twelve-year construction year. Why don't you comment on that one?
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. I apologize if, if the intent, or if, if it came across as a filler project. That was not the intent. The intent was to show that we need to do projects of varying scope and size as we move forward here. And this is one of those projects that falls into that category that we need to be done. Additionally, though, I guess the comments were brought up a little early about, well, this one, you know, has different amounts of utility improvements compared to other ones. And that was just to, my goal was just to expound upon that, to say that each project's a little bit unique. However, they still fall under the category of reconstruction. And some are big, some are small, and some have different levels of reconstruction activities that need to happen. So, I mean...
Mr. Mayor and council, I can, let me expand a little bit on that.
Yeah, thank you.
When we set up the pavement management program or the reconstruction program in the city, we looked at the, the pavements. But we not only looked at the pavements, we looked at the utilities in the city also. If you recall, we, we looked, the, the country club was falling apart. As far as utilities go, the South Hurry Park on the fifty-fourth, that area is falling apart. So there's a, there's a need for replacing the utility systems on older neighborhoods, not this neighborhood, but on older neighborhoods. And then there is a need for replacing pavements that are thirty-five to forty-plus years old to do that. So what, so what we've, what we're working with is, is every year that we're working with a, a, basically a budget. It's not an unlimited budget, but it's a, it's a budget around five million dollars approximately, plus or minus, for, for redoing the roadways. And part of that, out of that budget comes utility costs, so that, and that right there is set by the rates. We do a rate study so that our rates can absorb those, those costs. So we, we have probably a, a, a big need to replace a lot of our utilities, but we can't do it all at once. So we, we look at other, other projects that have pavement that needs to be redone. And, and I would disagree. I, I think, I've been out there, walked, walked the, the neighborhood, and this pavement is, does need to, to be redone. But I, but like I say, is, is that we're looking, we look at how we, how we capture all the different projects over the, over the years, and we, and we kind of fit them together so that we, so we're not doing, you know, millions of dollars in utilities, and not millions of dollars in, in pavement projects. It's a combination. So what, what Jack, I believe, was trying to, to say is, is that we're, you know, it's not a cut-and-dry simplified formula that, that we use to determine which neighborhoods get on the list or not get on the list. It's, we look at what the need is as far as the pavements, how fast that they're gonna be deteriorating, or we feel that they're gonna be deteriorating, what the utility costs are in other, other parts of the city. And then we, then we put it on a list and kind of prioritize the list. And we're out ten, fifteen years on a, on a list that we, that we have. We're, we're, we're published five years out, because as you know, the deterioration curves on a pavement will change. And so we, we keep looking at. But we're, we're, we're looking at it, the, the, the overall good of the whole city here to, to be sure that, that we're keeping up on this infrastructure replacement, which we basically are about ten to fifteen years behind in the city as far as replacing the, the pavements and such. This area here, I think it's, 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 you look at the topography, you look at, at, at the grounds, the drainage issues that are, that are occurring. You look at how quickly the deterioration is happening. And one of the questions was, what happened, what was it in two thousand and five? But we didn't have the, the PCIs in two thousand and five on local roads. We only had them on, on state aid roads about that time. And that's when we started jumping up the system to, to really look at the neighborhoods and see if we, you know, what, you know, as far as what, how the PCI, so that we could, we could formulate a, a list or priority list of the neighborhood itself. But, but if we, I would, as, as a professional engineer, I would go back and say, looking at the, the subgrade conditions in the neighborhood, and looking at, at the deterioration of these is that this will deteriorate quickly. I mean, it's, it's, right now, you're looking at pavement that, that has a lot of cracking in it. In some areas, you have cracks that are probably four to six inches and, and blockwise. And what we see is, is that water is, is getting into the subgrade and the, and the surface. You're gonna see a lot of potholes start popping out. The, the pavement is just, it's just old and brittle. So I, so it, you know, I guess I'm covering a couple of things. One is, is how we budget, budget this, but then also looking at what the need for this neighborhood is. It's, it's needed. It's on, that's why we, we put it on the list. We don't put projects on the list just to do them, just to check them off on our list, to say, "Yeah, we did that." I mean, we'd much rather not be in the business of reconstructing the, the roadways in a, in a city, but it's something that needs, needs to be done.
Thank you. Mr. Slaughter, Mr. Westner, and I think Mr. Corup, I'm not sure I pronounced his name properly, all were concerned about the sidewalk issue. And Mr. Westner raised the issue of, it wasn't, it hasn't been very transparent. They really haven't had any chance to have any input on this sidewalk issue. And, and shouldn't they have that opportunity before we decide to put in a sidewalk? And so what's your response to that in terms of, in terms of community input or neighborhood input?
Mr. Mayor and council, I think this is gonna come up more than once through this public hearing season on sidewalks, on other projects that I've, that I've been, been seeing with the neighbors. What I would suggest on this one, or recommend to the council, that if you wanted to go forward with, with looking at putting a sidewalk in, and if you order the project, is that we would do a, a bid alternate on the sidewalk, and then we would work with the neighbors to, to get their input on it, to, to see, you know, where, where it could be. But if you go forward with the project, is that, like I say, we, we could put it in as part of the project, and then you, when you do the award a bid, is that you could determine if you wanted to continue with, with the sidewalk or not. Keep in mind that...
So not only the issue of where it could be, but whether you'd do it at all?
Right.
If you do it as a bid alternate, so, once you get that, that neighborhood input, you can, you can reach that, or we can reach that conclusion, I guess.
Right. And we still, you know, even, even the stub going into the, the school district property is, we really need a little bit more dialogue with the school district. Because if we're, if we're putting a stub into their, their property, where, where are the students going from there? Are they gonna maintain it? Are they gonna take liabilities once it gets into their property? I think that there's a lot of things that need to be worked out with the school district on it.
All right. Thank you for that. Mr. Slaughter and Mr. Ballard both raised the issue of drainage, and, and thinking that this really is an issue that's been resolved through discussions with, with the city, and that there are still folks that are gonna have problems because they can't get the water to the street, and thought we might need some assistance on that issue. So could you speak to that concern that these folks have?
Certainly, Mayor, councilmembers. There is, when we solicit input on drainage concerns that they have, they range. The concerns are stormwater, sump pumps, eaves trough, front yard, backyard, side yard type of concerns. The general consensus that I heard is that there's a lot of backyard drainage from storm sewer, excuse me, sump pumps, and rain discharge at, at eaves troughs that have created this problem in the backyard. Staff cannot drive on a private property or construct on private property storm sewer network. However, the network that we're providing would be at the right of way that for this pumped activity, such as sump pumps or eaves troughs, that they could redirect those instead of being discharged to the side yard or to the backyard, could be discharged to the front yard through a pipe network into the system. That may not work for every homeowner. Some of their systems internally do finished basements, or the way that the topography is, would not allow some of that redirection. So of course, this preferred solution would not be applicable to everyone who abuts this area, and would also be required of the homeowner to spend some of their own resources to make that happen. And that's something that we can't, can't mandate or require with this project either. So just because we provide the system doesn't mean that they have to connect into it. So with that being said, that, I mean, that's kind of where, you know, we'll, we'll provide what we can, but we can't do all the work in relation to that. And we probably will not alleviate or eliminate the problem completely, but we can minimize or mitigate the majority of that.
My sense is that they have, they fully understand that the city isn't gonna work on their private property. But I think they maybe would appreciate advice on what are some of the things that could happen from an engineering standpoint, and give them a little bit of guidance on what to do with their own property to, to get it to, to the city system if we go forward with this project. And I think that's what they're looking for, is a little bit more support and advice.
Mr. Mayor and, and council, we do that on a regular basis, even not, not only in this neighborhood, but if somebody else has a drainage issue in their backyard, Jesse Struve, our utility engineer, myself, even Jack and, and other, other folks have gone out to, to help residents and kind of give them some pointers of, of what they could do to help alleviate some of their low spots or chase some drainage and things like that off of their property. So, yeah, that, that would be one that, that our staff definitely could, could help out the neighbors, and also to maybe even help broker a deal with the neighbors to, if there's somebody that's blocking the, the rear lot line of preventing drainage, you know, maybe try to help, help it out, to clear that out. Looking at the plat of where the drainage issue, there is no easement along that rear property line, which is an older plat, which makes it difficult to, to come in as a government entity and, and clear out a drainage way. But if, but if we can help, if the neighbors are willing to, to work with us, we can suggest something similar to what we did in Richmond Hills.
All right. And then both Carol Corup and Peter Schnorbach had concerns about the evaluation process we went through to decide that five REU equivalents was appropriate for the school district, when they described some pretty vigorous usage of the property and people parking in their neighborhoods and... neighborhoods. And maybe there's a distinction there, but nonetheless, I think we all know that those school, the school property gets used pretty extensively for a variety of different purposes. So can you walk through one more time why you thought five REUs was the appropriate allocation? And can we, can we modify that if we decide to subsequently assess them more REUs based on some information that we might receive subsequent to a potential preliminary approval?
Mayor, Councilmembers, I think that would be my suggestion. Councilmember Sprague mentioned earlier that we should look at in the midterm before the previous project gets assessed, that we look at a, a more definitive policy on that. Maybe this one falls into the same category. I'll just make that suggestion. And I would defer to Attorney Knudsen to understand the legality of that. If you'd like me to go through the rationale we use, I could certainly do that, but maybe we're to the point where we-
Yeah, it may not be necessary to restate it, but I think it's just the assurance from Roger Knudsen that we can, we can deal with this issue. If this project were to be approved, we could deal with this issue between preliminary approval and final assessment, which would be almost two years from now.
That's correct, Mayor, you can. All right. Other questions that folks picked up that I might have missed?
The feasibility study, the PCI was included in that. Have residents had access to that feasibility study? If not, I would recommend or ask that the map just be put up under the overhead. It is helpful understanding that it dates from June of two thousand and nine, and there's been deterioration since then. But it does indicate, I think one person who testified tonight was particularly concerned that the badly deteriorated streets are the most seriously deteriorated adjacent to the school parkland, and that does not in fact appear to be the case. That variability appears to carry throughout the neighborhood, which goes to the question and Mr. Sullivan's answer earlier, that you can't spot reconstruct. And there's a question of how much repairs are going to hold together if you're mixing more and less deterioration within the same block.
Faded nature of the overhead a little bit, but this was the pavement ratings as they were taken in, in July of two thousand and nine. This segment of, this segment of Nordic is rated a forty-three, and then it goes to forty-five. So they're always in, in, from intersection to intersection. So each segment is broken down to, this segment's a forty-three, forty-five, fifty-two, and then thirty. And then thirty-one for Nordic Circle, fifty-one on Scandia, fifty, thirty-five, forty-five, and then it actually breaks here, and then thirty-two, twenty-seven, and forty-five. And that's when they were rated in two thousand and nine, as we talked about, then the average has dropped to twenty-nine at this point. So yes, this information is available for anyone that would like to take a look at the feasibility report. Obviously, it's a pretty lengthy document. We have them available at Engineering Department, also they're online as well. If anyone would like to take a look at it, more than welcome to share that information.
Do we, do we have a database of the PCI scores? Because I think this has come up before. I know people can come into City Hall and look at some of the data, but if I were a resident, if I, doing my own analysis, I would, I would want to look at some type of data, either historical, to compare, you know? Even though we understand it's not a single-pronged analysis, there's multiple prongs to the test of when it comes up in the priority.
That, that is on our to-do, many things, the to-do list, and that we're, we're compiling this to-do list so that we can start getting some dates on when we can make those, those items available. But we've talked about internally of posting those, which we do, you know, if, if you look at our website of what we, where we were five, six years ago to where we are today, we're posting as much stuff as we can as it becomes available, just for that fact that people can then look at things and, and, you know, get the background and, and make some of their determinations also.
Other questions for staff? Did we cover everything that folks raised?
I, I think also on the sidewalk issue, I, you know, somebody brought this up from the ETC about the material that's sent out being somewhat misleading. It's not a, with sidewalks, first of all, we have a comp plan, that's one factor. We have the, the resident factor. And by the way, in ninety percent of the time, the residents don't want any sidewalk anywhere. So if we just went with what the residents wa, wanted, we would never extend our sidewalk network. And this council is very dedicated to pedestrian and bike safety and expanding the network for pedestrians and bicyclists. We do that according to our comp plan. Sometimes we go off the comp plan, we're looking at new, new segments as well. That's usually done through discussion with the ETC, which is how this segment came up. It came up with the ETC, it came up with discussion with the school district. Can you talk a little bit about how that organically developed?
Certainly, Councilmembers. Earlier this fall, early winter, I was asked to attend a meeting at the Countryside Elementary, excuse me, Creek Valley Elementary School with principal, kind of a site council setup, their facilities director for the entire school district to talk about. They had a, an issue with pedestrians as they were walking north up Gleason Road, trying to find the, the least obstructed path to school. And that ended up taking them, the least obstructed path for them, which was also the straightest path, happened to be up over the hill between the trees and through the snowbanks in the wintertime, because that's where they didn't have to conflict with cars. That's where they didn't have to conflict with other operations, the buses and, and such. And from that discussion, the school district is looking at additional recreation of their parking lots, sidewalk facilities, long-term, and this won't happen overnight, but getting the funding sources available. But out of that discussion was what if a sidewalk could be built that would connect into that back door to get pedestrians away from all the vehicle activities that are happening out there? Maybe a little bit longer, may not, everyone may not use it, but if it's a plowed, well-maintained sidewalk, then that would have the capability of those students being away from the traffic that's trying to turn on and off of Gleason at these different entrance points into the school. And so that's how that started. And staff is, like I said, took that back, and ETC had also picked up on the same kind of thread. One of the individuals who was on the ETC is a parent at the school, is on the, and has some interaction there. So that's how that discussion started at the ETC level as well, kind of replicating that same thought process there. And so that's what the ETC recommended. School was on board with it as well, and you're right, it's not part of the comprehensive plan, but staff is concurrent with the fact that it would, it would lend a, a safe alternate route that would avoid the vehicle traffic for pedestrian movement, bicycle and pedestrian movement.
The other thing about, about sidewalks is, when are we doing a street? We have a one shot to do this cost-effectively. So if were we to extend it, now would be the time. Were we to go all the way down the street? That doesn't mean we're going to do that, it means we need to take a look at that now because this is a cost-effective time to do that. So the ETC did not recommend that additional segment. However, we talk about segments that aren't recommended all the time. That's the prerogative of the council, as we're trying to expand our walking network. So just so people understand, that's how, how it's been working.
Go ahead, Member Bennett, go ahead. I saw your head reach quicker.
Following up on the question about sidewalk and, and hearing the concerns, it's not only, I think, that people hadn't contemplated it. I think the, it's a place where we could improve our process because we ask about things like pet containment and irrigation, and we ask about streetlights. And in some instances, if there's a safety issue, then asking about the streetlights isn't helpful. I understand that that's not the case in either of the projects this evening. And with sidewalks, if it's a safe route to school question, or if it's a safe route to parks question, then I think also it's not in the same decision-making basket that they are if they're on a street with four hundred vehicles a day, and it's purely a question of preference, do people want a sidewalk in front of their home or not? So I think that's a place that we can improve. I think also that what I'm hearing people say is, one big concern is bus traffic on a street that really is, to all extent, a big cul-de-sac, the network of streets. And so if the buses are, are entering, then they have to turn around, and if there is concern, I hear concern, that the buses are somehow going to use, the school will use this sidewalk to facilitate bus loading. What impact do we have to suggest or require that that not be done? If the purpose of the sidewalk is to facilitate walk-in and to create that as a viable transportation option for kids and families in the area, then putting the buses is actually going to count, buses next to that sidewalk during school, before school and after school will work against the sidewalk serving that purpose. So what impact can we have on that?
Councilmember Bennett and, and Council, I'm, I'm not sure I'd have to defer that as far as the legal, the legality of the impact that we would have with the school district. But I think with our relationship with the school district is that we can really stress to them that they cannot, you know, if that sidewalk is put in, is that, that, the use of that sidewalk is not for loading and unloading students off of buses, because you actually have two turnarounds within the, within the property of the school to, to do that, that maneuvering, basically, with the school buses itself. I don't, like I say, I don't know unless our, our manager or city attorney has any other suggestions on, on how to work something like that out with the school district.
We could sign it and handle it as a traffic signage issue.
Yeah, that's true, yeah.
Well, we, we have our manager, our staff, meeting with the school district once a month, or quarter, at least quarterly.
Quarterly, yeah.
Yeah. And I think this is a great issue to bring up with them as to why they're-
All of these fall under this, some of it's safe across the school, and some of it's just in these local reconstruction projects, the school is a neighbor. Certainly, by the time we're done with the project, we want to try to eliminate some of these hassles for the neighborhood. That's why we're doing this, to try to enhance the quality of life in the neighborhood. So the, the soccer, parking, and the school bus, they need to be addressed, period. Whether that happens with, at the staff level or city manager, we're not going to leave this neighborhood worse off. We want to leave it better off than before we came there, that's the point.
Part of having this discussion tonight on sidewalks, and I appreciated the man who lives on Creek Valley Road, that the sidewalk would be in his front yard. But what he told me was that the school doesn't, the high school does nothing to maintain the Ho Chi Minh Trail up to the school. And that was a valuable piece of information, because today I was kind of running late for this meeting when I stopped at the Stub Road, or I like Stump Road, and, and saw part of the trail, not realizing that they hadn't done anything to keep it connected and, and ready. So that was a valuable piece of information. That's why this process, that part of the process and your being able to comment works up here. We do have a pretty strong commitment to safe routes to school, and the ETC put the sidewalk not in anyone's front yard, but on school property. And there's a difference in that. We're not asking you to give up your easement for the sidewalk, we're putting it on school property. And that means that either the school or the city is going to be clearing it. So I think that piece of the sidewalk is really important that goes from that corner where Nordic Circle hits Creek Valley out to Gleason. I also think it's important that the school buses not load or unload off of that piece of property, and if they're waiting there and there's a better place for them to wait, I'm sure we can work that out.
On, on the, the street condition as well, I, visual inspection by a layperson is not a reliable source for determining whether a street needs reconstruction. It reminds me of Oscar Roberts, which is a street in my own neighborhood that we did last year. And I went out there myself, I looked at part of it. Part of it looked decent, part of it looked pretty poor. But when we got into this process and figured out that the structural integrity and the score was low, that's when we made a determination it was, it was necessary to go forward with the project with all the other elements that, that were specific to that neighborhood. And it's not about euphoria for reconstructing, it's, it's again, it's about a commitment to sound public infrastructure. And because we're so far behind, we can't afford to push back a necessary improvement, whether it's this neighborhood or any else. We did do that before with-
Ridge Road.
Ridge Road. And the deterioration hastened, and we could not get them back on the schedule to get it done. And now we're going to be faced with a more expensive project down the road. That's not the charge of me as a council member, as being a good steward of the taxpayer funds either. So, and then, and then also in terms of the exchange that happens with, with the people, with the residents, I, I feel that this era, this council, the city manager, you have the greatest opportunity to have your voice heard, whether it's by petition or being here yourself. You have people that are, that are open-minded, we haven't made a predetermined decision. We're trying to come up with the best decision and the best project for the neighborhood. Without your input, we wouldn't do that. You have, you're the best people on the ground to bring forward information. Every project, every project I've made a decision on, I've found that to be true. Every issue I've worked on in the city, I've found that to be true. So the fact that you have an effective place to be heard and that we're listening is the most important part. It doesn't mean we're going to be, agree on the outcome all the time. Again, we have different, we're balancing different things up here. We're looking at the entire city as well and not just one specific neighborhood. So just keep that in mind as we're trying to work together to get the best project.
I think all of you sat through this prior hearing and saw how tough these things are, how hard it is for us to think about these matters, but we nonetheless have this obligation to the city as a whole and the infrastructure, maintaining a sound public infrastructure, as Member Sprague said. So I need someone to make a motion, or are we going to have a motion in a second? We've had a lot of discussion here, but no motion in a second.
I'll move the project.
No, second project.
All right. Is there a, with respect to that sidewalk issue, I do feel like we need more neighborhood input. Can that be, would, would the motion include that as a bid alternate?
Your Honor, I am, I'm quite comfortable with the sidewalk on school property. And in terms of its utility as a safe route to school, it's the equivalent of what was done in the Highlands neighborhood with Doncaster. There will be similar sidewalk built on School Road, so there is a consistent approach throughout the city. And I, I can support that without, I had correspondence with, with Mr. Sullivan earlier today about the approximate cost. It looks like about a hundred and twelve dollars a household. The school pays a twenty-five percent, the city pays twenty-five percent, residents pay fifty percent. The, the only question I have is walking shed, and I understand that there's also going to be connecting or network sidewalk from the west side and then the walking shed. This walk, part of the walking shed would not be revisited for that sidewalk coming from the west. Otherwise, I'm comfortable with that. The issue that I, that I believe remains on the table is the REUs for the school. We had that, the question of whether or not that could still be examined, and do we have an answer on that?
Did you say that the sidewalk was entirely on school property?
Yes. Yep. The one, the one in the plan-
The, the one that was recommended by the ETC.
The one that's in here is just-
Yep.
So what are the neighbors being assessed for?
Exactly.
What, I mean, it's on school property, what are the neighbors being assessed for? It's not running in front of their house.
That's a good question.
What's the- It's actually within the city right of way, and that's why the, it's kind of consistent with how we've done all the other walking shed sidewalks.
I would take it out until we have time to think about it. I don't want it as part of this project if we haven't really thought it through, if it affects neighborhood assessment.
I think the neighbors should have a chance to have some input on it, too. I don't mind coming back and dealing with it, but I don't want, I don't want to-
You're never gonna, if, if you come back and, and, and deal with it. I don't mind dealing with the cost of it, but if you come back and think you're going to deal with it a year or two or three from now to put it in, we've tried for three years to get the Concord sidewalk in, trying to find funding for it and haven't been able to. And that's a way even more dangerous situation than this. We're never going to put it in. So either-
We put it in, I, I'm not-
Either we put it in and we figure out-
Either we put it in and we figure out the funding on it because of the question of, is it on...
All right.
...city property or school property, but I still think the vote to put it in is a very important one.
My motion is for the project as presented, which is with the sidewalk, but I would accept your friendly amendment to consider the funding.
All right, I'll second that.
Go ahead, clarify, go ahead.
Well, also the question of the school REUs. Do we have a...
So the...
That we know we can, we can deal with, but I think we should, yeah. I intend to deal with that, we, I think we should.
So both issues will be considered in the funding arena?
Right.
Both the REU and then, and then for the sidewalk?
Yes.
Okay.
The neighbors make a pretty compelling case about...
What about the petition?
You want to stay in here or you want to exit? Yeah, the petition is considered and we're not going to, well, we don't, we haven't voted yet, so. All right, we're going to defer the...
Yep.
Funding allocation on the sidewalk, that's understood. We're going to defer on the REUs on the school.
Correct.
Figure that out between now and potential final assessment. With, with those two conditions, I can support it. Member Brendel?
I'm actually going to vote against it, only because there are, there are enough, I understand that I'm a layperson, and looking at the roadway looks fine to me, and I understand that there are, you know, there, there is continued degradation that's going to happen, that this project will happen. It'll happen maybe in five years, it'll happen maybe in three years. It depends upon the condition of the roadway and when this project gets put in the schedule. But part of, you know, part of being up here is, is understanding what it's, you know, what, what it's like to share in, to share in decisions like, just like this. And you want to talk about a patchwork neighborhood? I live in a patchwork neighborhood. The Mill and Overlay happens every couple of years, and they did it again this year. So, or we did it again this year. So a patchwork neighborhood doesn't bother me in the least. What we're doing is extending the life of that roadway until such time as it is absolutely time to replace it. And that's why I'm going to vote against it. I think that it can be delayed for a few years. And, and it won't be delayed forever. And just, please understand that I, I'm not voting against this because it's not needed. I'm voting against it because I feel like it doesn't need to be done now.
All right. In my opinion, we need to rely on our professional engineers. The notion that we don't want it doesn't cut it as a standard. If, nobody wants these things, us included, even on our own assessments, but we got to do it for the best interest of our community. And we rely on our professional engineers, and unfortunately, your neighborhood is next, and it's going to be done. So, roll call.
Member Sprague.
Aye.
Member Swanson.
Aye.
Member Bennett.
Aye.
Member Brendel.
Aye.
Mayor Houghland.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, next matter is another public hearing. It's the approval of a preliminary and final plat, potentially for Excel Energy, Washington Avenue South matter, it's on the Bloomington Edina border. Director Teague?
This is dated down in the southwest corner of the city. It's a unique pop property, and as the mayor mentioned, is located both in the city of Edina and Bloomington. It's bordered on the west by the city of Eden Prairie, it's the Vikings Training Center. Existing on the site that's located in Edina is this two-story office building. There's no improvements proposed to the lot in Edina, and it would remain one lot as it exists today. Currently, the property contains four lots, as shown here. You see, the, the blue line running through represents the municipal boundary. And again, that lot in Edina would remain the same. The applicant's proposing to plat this into two lots with the, a portion of the northern lot would extend down into the city of Bloomington. There's a parking lot that's associated with that, with that building on the Edina property that it's located now in two separate parcels, so those would be joined together. The lot to the west would be developed with a, an Excel Energy substation that would take up essentially the entire southern lot. Now with that being in, located in the city of Bloomington, review approvals are necessary by the Watershed District and the city of Bloomington for that substation. Being that the plat is located in both Edina and Bloomington, the plat requires approval from both cities. So with that, staff and the planning commission are recommending approval of the preliminary plat, subject to the findings and conditions that are outlined in your staff report.
Questions for Director Teague? All right, thank you. This is a public hearing, I'm going to open it up for public comment or inquiry. Is there anyone who wishes to come forward and inquire or comment regarding this matter? Seeing no one coming forward and hearing nothing, is there a motion to close the public hearing? We moved in second, if we close the public hearing. Discussion, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. Carried. Do we have a motion with regard to this matter? We moved in second, if we adopt Resolution 2012-13 approving a preliminary, preliminary and final plat for 7777 Washington Avenue South. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Member Swanson.
Aye.
Member Bennett.
Aye.
Member, Member Brendel.
Aye.
Member Sprague.
Aye.
Mayor Houghland.
Aye.
All right, next matter is... The 2012-01 regarding revisions for approved site plans. Director Teague?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. The ordinance before you, last summer, the council directed staff and the planning commission to consider an ordinance in regard to minor changes that are suggested to be made to council-approved but not yet built site plans. Current code allows staff to approve minor changes, however, the code, the code doesn't define what minor changes are, doesn't clearly define. Current policy is that any change to an approved site plan, staff brings back to the city council for consideration. So over the last several months, staff and the planning commission have considered the ordinance that's before you and are recommending it for approval this evening. So the ordinance before you allows staff to, on a one-time basis, allow a, or approve a minor change if the change doesn't increase the, the proposed number of dwelling units in the project, and the proposal doesn't increase the floor area of structures on a site, the square footage doesn't increase by 5 percent. All proposed revisions have to comply with all city code requirements, and there's no change to any condition required on a site plan, including building materials and color. And the property can't be located within an Edina landmark district. All other plan modifications would be required to be reviewed and approved under the, the typical planning process through the planning commission and city council. So with that, staff and the planning commission are recommending the ordinance before you, and if you're comfortable with the language, we would suggest that you waive second reading.
Questions for Director Teague? Member Bennett?
Thank you. Director Teague, is the intention to limit someone, a proponent, from coming to have minor changes approved one time or have one change approved? Because the language as it currently reads to me would seem to suggest that someone who has a number of changes might aggregate them so as to bring them in one time. And if the intention is to limit it to one change, then different words should probably be used.
Yeah. Councilmember Bennett, members of the council, if somebody had multiple changes and none of them exceeded any of those five conditions that were outlined, I would see that as staff could approve those. But if any of them, or in the aggregate, they reached the level of exceeding any of these conditions, I would bring it back through the process if that...
Follow-up question or, or related question is, I note that Bloomington's code has the 10,000 square foot limitation, and at the planning commission, it was recommended that that limitation be removed according to the minutes, because people felt that was too great a magnitude. Is there a project that you can name that in which the 10,000 actually would have been below? In other words, in, also in this case, should it read exceed 5 percent, comma, or 10,000 square feet, comma, whichever is less? Making it, making it 5 percent, but in the event that that 5 percent is more than 10,000 square feet, then we're again using that Bloomington recommendation that people seemed to be liking earlier of no more than 10,000 square feet?
Yeah, I would agree that that was staff's original recommendation, that there could be a project that's so large that it could exceed that 10,000 square foot threshold, but not the 5 percent. So the language that you're suggesting would more closely resemble that Bloomington ordinance and where we started from.
Sure, I would strongly favor putting it back, particularly since, again, what the planning commission seemed concerned about was a limitation that was too great, not a limitation that was too little, if I was reading the minutes correctly. Is my read of the minutes correct?
I, I would agree with that, yeah.
Okay, so that would be a second concern that I would have. Also, with respect to Edina Heritage Landmark District, I noticed that addition, would it not also be then appropriate to call out, specify any change to an Edina Heritage Landmark as well as the Landmark District?
We, we could certainly add that, that would add another layer to it.
But don't the individual homes that are designated separate from the Country Club, they have, what's it called? They have kind of a plan of treatment, but it's, it's an agreement between the Heritage Preservation Board, the city council and the homeowner as to how their house is treated. So it's a little bit different than the Country Club District, to be honest?
Well, we're thinking of residential right now, but a landmark might not be.
I know, I know that, but I'm just thinking, for instance, of the house at, on Interlocken Boulevard and the Forest House, which is out of the district on Wooddale. You know, they, they, they want to be designated, but they really don't fall under the same rules as the houses in Country Club that are being added on to or rebuilt, so I'm not sure if it fits the same way.
Sure, but to get to this point in the first place, there has to have been a site plan, that has to have gone through a process.
Yes, that's true.
And it's changed, being sought to that site plan, so we're not talking about most remodeling.
Okay.
It, it seemed to be, to be consistent. And then I guess I, looking at the, the chart, the survey, which was helpful, I noticed that actually 13 of the cities surveyed, there were 15 cities total, including Edina, 13 of them didn't define a change threshold. And understanding that in practice, what we've done as a city is that even though our code says minor changes and we haven't defined minor change, it appears that 13 of these other cities don't either. I'm not speaking in opposition to the code change, but I'm just observing. So I guess my last question is, well, two questions. First of all, it would appear to cover anything, the code, the compliance with zoning code would appear to cover the situation where a variance has been obtained, or to prevent something from going over a threshold that then would require a variance and sort of go around the variance process. What about something that was approved via CUP? What about PUD? And then also, what about height, which has been such a concern in the community?
As part of a PUD, a site plan would be approved, so this, this would, this provision would also apply to a PUD. Conditional use permit, we're typically not approving a site plan. If there were a change in a project, you know, a change in a condition of a conditional use permit, that would have to go back through the process. But this would not apply to a conditional use permit with no site plan attached to it.
Does, does this give you the discretion to approve the changes? Or does it state, does it mean in actuality that the proponent gets the change, period? It just gives you the discretion, correct?
It just gives me the, it gives staff the discretion. So yeah, if we felt that it rose to a level and still fit these categories, we still could bring that back through.
So...
And nobody uses square footage. Well, I mean, I don't understand the rationale for using square footage over percentage myself.
I was suggesting both.
I, I don't understand why you'd use square footage at all, though. Percentage covers the expansion of a use, no matter what the square footage is. Is there some arbitrary square footage amount that you'd max out at, and all of a sudden you're, it's not a minor change? To me, that seems more arbitrary than a percentage, which is related to the actual size. So I, I need to be convinced that we need both. I don't feel convinced. Is there any discussion on that?
Well, I, I'll chime in on that. If we say increase the floor area of structures on site does not exceed 5 percent or 10,000 square feet, but if this is a large building and they want to increase their size by 5 percent, and we say, but, oh, nope, 10,000 square feet, whichever is less, it may be ridiculous for them. It may mean they can't do it at all. And it may not be reasonable for them to do any increase at all. If it's a big building, we limit them to whichever is less, between 5 percent and 10,000 square feet. I mean, are we talking strictly residential here? Or are we talking any, we're, we're not, are we?
This could be industrial, commercial, or residential.
Then I don't, I, I don't see putting square footage in there. I think the 5 percent is 5 percent. And it's, it has an equal meaning to a large building versus a small building, based on, it, it's all based on the size of the original building.
But this isn't whether or not that change can be made, it's a question of the process by which that change is approved. And what this is calling for is specifying, prescribing, is an administrative process rather than a process that goes to the planning commission and to the city council. So what it's, that's why I think that having both the percentage and the square footage makes sense, because what appears to be, what was desired in the first place was something that emulated Bloomington. Bloomington uses both, and for a larger project, the percentage is, could be, as Planner Teague points out, quite a bit more square feet. That does have an impact. And the question is, again, whether the approval of that will be administrative or whether it will go through some process that involves the ability of the public to see what is proposed in common on it.
I, I was a proponent of...
So administrative or not, it's a number.
Yeah, I was proponent of the change to emulate Bloomington to go to a specific standard, not necessarily to knock off word for word their, their ordinance. So I, I don't, I'm not convinced that a flat square footage, all of a sudden 10,000 square feet is an impact that now we can't go through an administrative change.
Right.
Why not 8,000 or 12,000? That's arbitrary, we're back to arbitrary. Stick with a number, that's, that's the best practice out there, that no matter how big the project, it can never get bigger than 5 percent without going back through the public process.
Right.
That's fixed, it's not arbitrary, rather than just throwing a number out there because... That's fixed, it's not arbitrary, rather than just throwing a number out there because Bloomington has it.
And it's gross floor area, so that really doesn't change the height, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
FAR, right? Oh, no, gross.
Correct. So based on this, if somebody increased the height of a building, as long as it didn't exceed what our ordinance says, staff could approve that administratively.
But if councilmembers will recall, that was actually an issue when a building with a CUP was approved for 12 square feet and instead went to 18 square feet in an R1 neighborhood where code would have let it be higher than that. But the impact, given the square footage of the building and the size of the building and other items, including materials, made that project have a very significant income, oh, impact.
Tell them, Chris.
Yeah. Impact, I mean, it almost doubled the height. And according to what I'm hearing tonight, and what I, and that was my analysis also as I was studying this, is that without a mention of height, you could end up with that project being an administrative approval rather than having to go back through planning commission and council, but ending up almost twice as high.
Roger.
Mayor, just, I'm not sure I quite understand the issue. But in a site plan review, administratively, what would be done is it's basically a checklist to determine whether the proposed changes meet all requirements of your ordinances and approvals. So if someone has a conditional use permit, by way of example, and you granted that conditional use permit and you limited the height to pick any number you want, you could not get a site plan approval to go over that height because it's restricted by the CUP. And if you have a PUD or anything else, any regulation in effect that says you can't do something, then you can't do it by amended site plan.
And saying that something, if a condition is that it will be built according to plans and specs, and the plans show a certain height, then even if that height is not called out as a separate condition, it is in fact a condition?
It's a good way of asking.
Depends on how specific you are and how you write it. It could be, yes.
My imagination has been expanded by experience.
Yeah, no, no, no. No, it was a good way to ask that question, actually, Member Bennett, because it caused Attorney Coons to pause.
It caused me to pause.
Because he realizes that that is sort of the rub. If we don't call it out specifically, then-
But if you have a site plan and you say you must build it exactly in accordance with these plans and specs.
Which is what we say.
Which we said.
Then you can't deviate from, that's a condition, then.
Okay.
Isn't that what we always say?
Yeah, we just didn't make them tear down their building.
Well, or alter it anyway.
Yeah. But, you know, that may mean that this doesn't mean anything. I mean, if your plans and specifications say anything, you know, the plans and specifications address the issue.
This seems, you know, when I think about the times when you've brought things back to us, Director Teague, that you're concerned about, need the council's attention, and we've said that these are minor, you know, you should be able to do this yourself. I'm wondering whether this language as crafted even gets to those sort of circumstances that we've faced.
Where would the Waters have come out on this?
Well, the council.
With the, oh, that was, well, yeah. Oh, it's not an increase, so it would have been a minor change.
Right.
Yeah.
But it was also a change in parking, and this doesn't specify parking. Or, I mean, where does park, the question is, where does parking then follow?
No change to any condition required in site plan approval? Wouldn't parking have been a requirement?
Well, if they meet their parking requirement based on code, say they reduced, they reduced it by five stalls and they still met code, I would see that as staff could approve that because they're still in compliance with the parking requirements.
Go back to that point, too. Would you please tell us the distinction, at least in your mind, between gross floor area and square footage?
For staff?
From a staff perspective?
Yeah, I think from the planning commission, I think they were thinking, as Councilmember Sprague had mentioned, that there should just be a one flat, if it's 5%, that's the number, and not put a, the 10,000 square foot requirement.
But you're asking more, Mayor.
Why, gross floor area means floor plate, not square footage, meaning finished square feet without the unfinished areas and mechanical and everything added. Is that the distinction?
Oh, a 5% change in the-
Gross floor area.
Gross floor area concept versus square footage concept.
Just want to make sure that we're thinking, all thinking about it the same way. What, in your mind, what is gross floor area?
Yeah, that would mean all square footage within the building, not just the floor plate. So if we were to change to say 5% of the floor plate.
Gross floor area means all square footage in the building.
In the entire building, right.
Yeah, okay. So-
GBA, gross building area, another way to-
So I'm thinking about down in Bloomington, you know, they get these office buildings, they could be 400, 500,000 square feet down there. There are plants that we don't see, but nonetheless, I see why they have that square footage issue in there.
If I may, though, there are a couple of comments in the planning commission minutes that are relevant. There are the minutes from September 28th, and just above the zoning ordinance amendment, real estate sign ordinance, it says the 10,000 square foot allowance seems too much. And I did remember reading that. And then I also note on the 6/29/11 minutes on the previous page, Commissioner Schroeder questioned if a decrease in building size was considered a minor change. Planner, Planning Director Teague indicated this was a considerable change, and the language could read an increase or decrease in building size larger than 5% would be brought back to the council. So I guess, I think that the planning commission did a very deliberative job of bringing this forward, but looking back at some of the things that were either added or deleted, the conversation tonight seems to be, there seems to be a disagreement in interpretation of what it was that the planning commission was recommending.
Did the planning commission recommend this document exactly as written?
They did, yes.
Yeah, that's what I thought, that's, they all did.
Right, but again, the 10,000 square foot allowance, they wanted removed because they thought that was too much to contemplate in terms of that was beyond a minor change, which is what I was saying earlier in suggesting that the 5% be kept but 10,000 be added, and that it simply be the lesser standard that determined whether something crossed that threshold from minor to major.
Why 10,000? Why not 12 or 8? It's arbitrary. Because you're doing industrial, commercial industrial project and you decided to do a 5% or 3% increase, all of a sudden you can't get administrative approval versus a retail building and your 9,000 square feet?
No, again, you, well, you always, you always have the 5. And if a building is smaller, then your 5 probably isn't going to bring you up to the 10,000. If it's a more major project and you get to the 10, then that question is, is greater than that 10,000 square feet minor or major? And we have discussion in the planning commission that was indicating that they felt that, for them, removing the 10,000 square foot allowance was because, for them, it seemed too large to delineate the line between major and minor.
Yeah, so they wanted 8,000? Or 5% or 8,000, whichever's less?
Well, I think their imaginations might have been less than mine about what 5% could total.
I, it looks like we're already the most conservative city in terms of the regulations and the authority we give to staff. So I'm, I'm pretty comfortable with the way that it's written. With parking, did we say that that would, that would be covered because of the site plan approval? Okay. And let's talk about the decrease. That's an interesting point brought up. How do y'all feel about that?
Do you ever hear anyone coming in front of us and complaining because the building is decreasing in size?
Other than the Waters, no.
Well, they didn't want that to begin with, so I, but I mean, I just-
You're giving them the right to build to the max, so if they want to scale it back and still meet, comply with their site plan, otherwise, why not allow for administrative approval?
I don't know. In 17 years of planning commission and council work, other than a building that a neighborhood didn't want, and so they were still mad that it was going up even though it was smaller, I, I've never heard of a problem with the decrease, so I don't see the decrease as an issue.
But remember that in the instance of the Waters, what was being decreased was the square footage of the building, not the number of units, and yet the parking was being decreased. And there was some concern in the neighborhood expressed by a number of people as to whether or not the proposed parking was going to be adequate, given the, where the building definition fell in terms of our code requirements and definitions. So I think that that might have been a unique circumstance, but in, should a similar unique circumstance arise where parking is as sensitive as it potentially will be with this project, then decrease could be more than minor.
I think it's okay as written, myself. We're already the most conservative city, and we're giving some latitude to our staff to make some of these decisions and not drag everyone back through the public process when something's minor.
I'm comfortable relying on the recommendation of the planning commission.
And thank you for drafting this, by the way.
I would move.
This is a public hearing.
Oh, it is.
Is there, I'm going to open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to come up and comment or inquire regarding this matter, this proposed ordinance? Hearing nothing and seeing no one coming forward, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Move in second and we close the public hearing. Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed say nay. Carry. Is there a motion on this matter that would embody waiver of second reading?
I will move.
Second.
Ordinance number 2012-01 regarding revisions to approve site plans and waive second reading.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Discussion, roll call.
Member Swanson?
Aye.
Member Bennett?
Aye.
Member Brendo?
Aye.
Member Sprague?
Aye.
Mayor Hovland?
Aye. Okay, next is E, ordinance 2012-02 regarding the regulation of utility mechanical equipment.
Thank you, Mayor.
Director Teague, you have this matter as well.
I do. This is a result of another project from this past summer. This was the, you may recall, the 100 square foot, 12-foot tall air conditioner chiller unit out at the York Gardens Senior Housing Project. Since that was installed, staff and the planning commission have been considering the ordinance before you to specifically regulate utility cabinets and mechanical equipment. This type of equipment has not traditionally been required to meet setbacks. However, mechanical equipment could be defined in our ordinance as a structure and therefore a setback required. And that was the case with the York Gardens chiller. We called that a structure, and we were able to get it to be moved. So the goal of this ordinance is to make the regulations clearer than exist today. I've handed out a revised ordinance before you this evening that made a couple of changes, one by staff and one that was caught by Councilmember Bennett in regard to a code reference that I think is a big improvement. So summary of the ordinance that's in front of you is if the footprint of mechanical or utility equipment is 36 square feet in area or less, no setback is required. That's the first modification that was made. The way it was written originally, there was no regulation for 36 square foot. The second condition is if in the aggregate, mechanical and utility equipment is larger than 36 square feet, a setback is required. And the setback that would be required would be for the principal building setback within the underlying zoning district in which that equipment would be located. The third is in regard to air conditioning units in the R1 and R2 district. A setback would be required similar to an accessory building or structure in the R1 and R2 zoning district. And the change that's before you is that that specific reference to that regulation has been included. The fourth requirement is that all mechanical equipment accessory to buildings except single-family homes and duplexes have to be screened. That's a current code requirement, we just repeated it here within this section of the code. And last, any noise that comes from that equipment must meet the state noise guidelines. So with that, again, the planning commission and staff is recommending approval of the ordinance before you, and if, again, the council is comfortable with the language, you can waive second reading.
Questions for Director Teague? Member Sprague?
Thank you. Planner Teague, how doth one arrive at 36 square feet and 6 feet in height? Tell me a little bit about the rationale.
Yeah, we started out with the size of the chiller units out at York Gardens. We were thinking in the 80 to 100 square foot, and that, that structure was 12 feet tall. And we got smaller and smaller as we progressed. And the commission, the planning commission arrived at 36 square feet as a number they were comfortable with, and also came up with the, in the aggregate, they were concerned about multiple equipment, you know, these structures ending up in this-
You mean like five little ones in a row to get around the one giant one that all of a sudden would kick the setback?
Exactly. And then we should require a setback in that instance, too. So that's a little bit of the background. We started out larger, having that specific unit in mind, and thought it would be a good idea to screen units even smaller than that.
So most of the utility cabinets out there are how big, roughly?
Well, the-
I know they vary a little bit, but average-
They do, they do. It depends on the building size. But a lot of the recent projects that we've seen, Twin City Orthopedic, they had quite a large structure that was screened and required a setback. So they typically are in that 80 to 100 square foot range, and that was where we started with. So I think a lot of the bigger buildings that we're seeing are going to have mechanical equipment that exceed this code requirement and are going to be required to meet a setback.
But this wouldn't burden the utility companies with their little, you know, Quest has their little, most of those boxes, I'm thinking of, are under 36 square feet?
Correct.
Okay. Thanks.
Other questions, comments on the proposed ordinance? Another well-done piece of work, Director Teague.
Public here.
This is a public hearing. I'm opening this matter up for public testimony. Is there anyone who wishes to come forward and comment or inquire regarding this proposed ordinance? Hearing nothing, seeing no one coming forward, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Some move.
Move in second and we close the public hearing with regard to ordinance number 2012-02. Discussion, all those in favor, discussion, sorry.
Well, this is on the motion to close the public?
Yes.
Correct, correct.
Okay.
You're all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Carry. Do we have a motion regarding this matter?
Some move.
Would the motion include waiver of second reading?
Indeed.
I'll second that, it seems to be that-
And Member Bennett is-
Member Bennett has a discussion point.
Ready for discussion, yeah.
I have a couple of questions. First of all, looking at 850.07, that is the code provision that applies to all zoning districts, correct?
That's correct.
So number three, C3, makes it clear that air conditioning units need to comply with a particular section regarding setbacks in the R1 district. And I did note that the rear yard setback that's required by this section is only 5 feet. So if this is the provision that we subject air conditioning units to, people could put their air conditioning units within 5 feet of their rear property lines?
They could by code, but typically they're going to locate it as close to the house as possible and not have that long.
Right, because the runs on air conditioning units add to their efficiency.
Yeah, yeah.
I think our issue has always been air conditioning units between houses.
And that's good, 5 feet, I think, is what it's-
And that, actually, don't you have to comply with the side yard setback?
It's 5 feet.
5 feet.
Well, no, it's buildings and structures, it's 5 feet.
Yeah, on the side or the rear?
No matter what the side yard setback is, so if you have a, if you have a ten-foot side yard setback for your residents, I think you're still only required under this provision of code to setback five feet.
Correct, I think our biggest issue was in smaller than seventy-five foot lots, the fifty foot and forty foot lots in the east side of Country Club and some of the morning side, where the air conditioner tended to sit actually right on the property line because of where they put it, and we don't allow that anymore.
Right, so the concern probably net by your, if, given the, the location, desired location of air conditioning units, is it possible that with a ten yard setback, somebody's going to carry that unit and plop it right on the property line at five feet, five feet from the house? And is that, is that a desirable result, that would be one question, and then my other question, and why I hesitated on the motion, the wrong motion, is the question of, since this provision, eight fifty oh seven, governs all zoning districts, is there another kind of mechanical equipment that is included in C that is not specified by air conditioning units that could be an unanticipated problem? I'm just trying to think of things, yeah, make sure that we're doing this comprehensively.
Well, I suppose we don't really live in an area that does a lot with generators, that's the only other item that I can think of that has a noise to it that can be used in residential homes. We have them up at the lake, but you can hear them for about eight lots, so really where you put them on the lot doesn't make any difference, but generators are the only other thing I can think of, and how would this handle generators?
We could add that, we could add that in.
I mean, that's, you know, since you ask, can I think of anything else, yeah, I can think of generators.
Well, because thirty-six square feet and six feet in height might not be of huge visual impact in a more commercial neighborhood.
Yeah.
But in an R one neighborhood.
Right.
In R two.
And a generator could easily hit below that in size, actually. They're about five by five by five. Even a big one.
Do you know anybody that installs, permanently installs generators? You know, they're usually temporary things.
Yeah, I think.
For gas power.
No, we just have several people on our block because we lose power up on where our cabin is that install, no, they have permanent, permanent generators installed.
In, in your neighborhood, some people have permanent?
Not in my neighborhood, not in my neighborhood, up north in Brainerd, yes. And their lawyers are having them in their garage. Yeah. I currently have one in my garage, I'm thankful I haven't had to use it for eight years. Oh, I'm sure it does.
Anyway, well, when it's needed, it's needed.
Right, but if it, if it doesn't meet the noise regulations, then it wouldn't comply with the ordinance anyhow.
Would, would the language, mechanical equipment be broader in scope that would help us cover things like generators or other things that we can't think of at eleven o'clock at night?
Well, mechanical equipment in the R one and R two zoning district, is that your suggestion that three, that air conditioning units be replaced by mechanical?
Yeah.
Or, no, I'd leave air conditioning units there, but I'd say.
And, and other, and other mechanical.
And other mechanical equipment.
Yeah, I would say and other mechanical equipment would do that.
Yep, and I'll accept that friendly amendment.
Who had a second?
I did, and I'll accept the change.
Anything else?
No.
Director Teague has his red pen up.
Was, was the addition in number three to add mechanical equipment?
Air conditioning units and other mechanical equipment in the R one and R two zoning, I think is what, how it went, isn't that, Member Bennett, how you?
I worry that we might be in trouble with utility companies that put those small XL Energy right on property lines.
Because they're in R one districts.
Right.
Well, we didn't say utility poles and wires, and utility poles can also be an issue, but we could say other mechanical equipment except utility poles and wires.
But he's thinking not of utility poles and wires, he's thinking of the little square boxes, I think.
Right.
Yeah, what about we say other privately owned mechanical equipment?
Okay. I would be comfortable with that.
Would that meet?
Yep.
Yeah.
I'll accept that friendly amendment.
And the, and the, and the second here?
Saying, now, are you comfortable that we waive second reading with the changes we've made, both Director Teague and Attorney Tidson? Okay, have the rest of my attorneys here also comfortable with that?
Any other discussion?
Did I include waiver in my?
You did.
Well, you did, you did. And, all right, roll call.
Member Brindle.
Aye.
Member Sprague.
Aye.
Member Swanson.
Aye.
Member Bennett.
Aye.
Mayor Hovland.
Aye.
And that concludes the public hearing portion of the agenda. Now, it's time for community comment, and invite residents to come forward, see a gentleman with his hand up, familiar face.
Edina High School graduate.
You will have, you will have three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor, my name is Ralph Campbell, I live at sixty-seven hundred Point Drive in Edina, Minnesota, excuse me, I, I came here this evening, first of all, to thank you for your public service, thanks for your service to our community, and secondly, I wanted to personally thank you for West Seventieth Street, I lived there in that neighborhood, drive that road every day, or at least I have been recently, I was PTO Chair, Parent Teacher Organization Chair at Cornelia School during the heavy period of public hearings and input and, and the reports we got from engineering, and I attended as many as I possibly could representing Cornelia School at the time, and I have to tell you, what you produced for us is a much, much better result than, than I had hoped for then, and I can't thank you on behalf of that school because I'm no longer associated with it at all, but I wanted to be very specific, first of all, thank you for so carefully delineating the travel path through there, as a single lane road, it's, it's a whole lot more safe for the kids there and for everyone, it's really working great as far as I can tell. The twenty-five mile an hour speed limit is wonderful, thank you. Putting up that sign, that digital whatever it is that tells us how fast we're driving, thank you, thank you for putting that next to the school, thank you for putting a big sign that says twenty miles per hour if there's kids present, thank you for that. Thanks for the bike lanes, thank you for making the intersection at Cornelia Drive and West Seventieth Street so much safer, it's easy for kids to figure out where to go now, they've got a little white brick road to cross, it's wonderful. Thanks for the traffic circle, I'm a roundabout fan, I'm glad that we've got Valley View more a part of our neighborhood now, Valley View Road, it helps us, and very personally, just for me, thanks for the, the way you handled the left turn signal, traveling east on Seventieth as you turn onto France, if there isn't somebody in your way, you can turn left there, thanks for that, it's a real convenience, but thank you for all the time you put into this, thanks Wayne, thanks Jack, for all the time you guys put in, the staff, thank you to the council for taking your time with this, we ended up with a great road, a safe road, and one that's a real great thing to have in our little part of the town, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Anyone else?
Someday I'd like to do what Ralph did and come up here and thank you guys for everything, Josh, if I put this up here, can you zoom in on it?
But I.
If I put it over there.
Yep, you can put it on the. Yep, just need your name and address, and then throw it right in the middle on that table, and she'll zoom in on that for you.
And then I'll have a second thing that I need to zoom in on that will be smaller. My name is Steve Willett, and I live at fifty-seven oh five Cameron Drive, and what I'd like to do is, after the last council meeting, I have shortened my content to meet the three minute limit, I will pull, I will put the full content of, in a video on my Truth and Justice One channel on YouTube, thousands have watched my videos, including many district court judges appellate, I would like to thank, I would like to thank that my emails and videos, which will, which will often contain, to the FBI, attorneys and judges, I have, have resulted in shortened litigation and conviction of criminals, including last month's ruling on officers of Vic's Energy Systems, I want to offer what I believe are shared concerns for all Edina residents, first, congratulations, Mayor Hovland, you closed on the fifty-twenty-three Nob Hill Drive Road House on December twenty-third, just three days after the council approved changes to the property's easement, that house had a two thousand and one tax assessed value of nearly one point one million dollars, but you bought it for just six hundred and fifty thousand, if you flipped that house in five years, you could easily see a three hundred thousand dollar profit, the only other person that I know to get that percentage of return on real estate is, it will become apparent why I must take steps to make sure that this does not happen in my business dealings, integrity should be demanded of our elected officials, and they must take responsibility, I do not want to see Susan Quist, Molly Anderson, or anyone else take the blame for the actions of, corruption with any police force should never be accepted or tolerated, nor do I want to see this council. These are parts of a letter to Attorney General Lori Swanson, this letter is to inform you that your staff may have overlooked issues related to the individual and corporate status of Crossview, when the Chief Judge of the Fifth Judicial District dismissed my lawsuit against Robert Wertz, I would request that you personally respond to this letter, as a follow-on to my December thirtieth email to Mayor Hovland, I would like, I would like you to know that the donation to help save the University Lutheran Chapel at the U of M was not provided, this is the bulletin from their January service. From their January first service, on the back, under petitions of this week, for this week, it reads, "For our chapel, that God allow us to continue here in peace, and for the leadership of the Minnesota South District, that they repent of their actions," that was, came from a pastor, and that is on a church bulletin, "in two thousand and ten, I asked three people to publicly repent of their sins instead. All Edina residents have a valid concern, that, that should this council not request the Bureau of Criminal Apprehension investigate the handling of the two thousand and ten church vandalisms by Detective Vic Conthers and Chief of Police Jeff Long, that a lawsuit will commence that will be extremely costly to our city, I urge you to have the integrity, courage, and faith to take personal responsibility for initiating this investigation and not passing the baton on to any other city staff or individuals."
Mr. Willett, let you drift over just a little bit.
And I appreciate that, and other people have, and so, with that, I will say thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, that concludes community comment, we've got a little more work to do this evening, we've got a resolution accepting various donations, is there a motion on that matter? All right. All those in favor say, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed say nay, carried, donations this reporting period, Edina Park Department, and some special recognition for Dick and Susie Prockett, that purchased a sculpture called Reflecting on Friendship, nice piece of sculpture of a couple of kids, the acquisition made through the Edina Community Foundation as a result of a donation by Dick and Susie to the community foundation, and so thank them very much, and then Edina Arts Center and Braymore Golf Course, all those names will be on the website in a few days, and now we are at correspondence and petitions, anything else, manager Neil, other than what we have up here at the dais? Okay, and then, mayor and council comments, Member Sprague.
I'm usually loquacious up here, but I'm, I'm tired out tonight, I'm just looking forward to the neighborhood steering committee's actions, process, getting fired up, and I'm just, I'm so excited about the whole deal, and other than that, I'm gonna pass the baton.
Mayor Swanson. Member Bennett.
Just one thing, and that is, it relates to attending the ETC meeting and hearing some of the resident comment at that meeting, and then also the, some of the comments made by residents on Normandale Road, and then noting that, and then appreciating Mr. Campbell's comments on the dynamic speed sign, I think they do work really well, and I think that there are locations where they are particularly useful, as Mr. Campbell pointed out, near a school is particularly useful, I also think that in those few instances in our city when we have a freeway exit that leads off into a neighborhood, it could be a really good location for a dynamic speed sign, as is used in St. Paul on Creighton Avenue leading off Highway ninety-four, it's a pretty good reminder for people who are exiting the freeway and coming up that ramp and maybe making a light for the right turn, right-hand turn south on Creighton, then they'd see that speed sign pretty quickly after they're on Creighton Avenue, and I think that going forward, looking at, I understand that there's a cost associated with them, but when we look at our patterns of enforcement and where, where we have particular call over and over for enforcement, it could be something that would help drivers better self-enforce.
Thank you. Member Brindle.
Yes, I have a couple of things, we have a quarterly report from Bloomington Public Health in our packets, and one statistic that I found very interesting, the WIC program is women, infants, and children, and I've actually been over there and just kind of observed how that program works, and it is highly used, but I did not realize, in quarter one of two thousand and eleven, that were five hundred forty-five unduplicated Edina residents served in that quarter, and that just, and then quarter two, five hundred and forty-three, quarter three, six hundred four, so I actually called Karen Zelsneck today and wanted to talk with her a little bit about that population and find out a little more, just to see where, who they are in a way, but what their needs are, that just sounds like a big number from our city, so, and then the other thing is, just an item of interest in visiting with Bert Letter recently, we were talking about the international population and the Park Lawn neighborhood, the apartments at about, on Park Lawn west of, on Seventy-Sixth Street, as it turns to Park Lawn, which is west of France, which on my, in, in my work on the Edina Crime Prevention Fund, we've focused on that area to have, in a summer playground program, to provide a one-on-one kind of program with the police department and the kids in that community to build some liaison relationships between the Somali community and the police department, and as it turns out, that population is turning over quite a bit to East Indian more so than Somali, according to Bert, so I just thought I'd bring that up in the changing population, and, and that's even reflected in the population at school, she mentioned as well, so, but those are my two things.
Thank you. Just one quick thing, traffic related as well, Ralph Campbell made me think about it, I was out in Eden Prairie, and they've got some of these left turn signals that will flash yellow, and so if there's nobody coming the other direction, you can make a left turn, and, you know, you think about, I know these are county situations, but you think about Seventieth at York, when you're over there, and you wanna, and there's nobody coming from Richfield, and you're just, if it's interminably long white, would be great if there was a flasher there so people could proceed left with caution, and a few other places around Edina as well, those would, those would work well, but I've seen several of them, Eden Prairie, and I, I think we should be thinking about it too, that's it for me, manager Neil.
None, thank you.
All right, and, all right, we're gonna move into the HRA agenda, we've got.
We need, we need to adjourn.
During this meeting. During this meeting.
Yeah.
All right. All right, if nothing further with regard to the council meeting, we will stand adjourned and convene the Edina Housing Redevelopment Authority meeting. Convening the Edina Housing and Redevelopment Authority meeting, do we need a rule call?
I can certainly take a rule. Commissioner Bennett?
Here.
Commissioner Brindle?
Here.
Commissioner Sprague?
Here.
Commissioner Swenson?
Here.
President Hovland?
Here. I thought there was a correct.
Two. President. President. Wow. Getting upgrades in here. Can I be Vice President?
All right. We've got some minutes to approve, regular meeting of April 19, 2011. Is there a motion?
Uh huh.
And a motion is second on the minutes of the HRA for the regular meeting of April 19, 2011, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed to approval, say nay. Approved. Next, Resolution 2012-2. We need to change the date on this matter to be consistent with the change we made in the council meeting to February 21st for the, for the hearing. Is there a motion to that effect?
Some moved.
Second.
All right. Moved and second, and we adopt Resolution 2012-2. Proposed amendment to Centennial Lake, 5th District, change the hearing date to February 21, 2012. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Carried. And now, we have a redemption of certain securities, maturities, I should say, not securities, bonds.
Could I ask, Mayor, though, I just wanted to explain the map really quickly, because we do need the council to indicate.
Okay.
Which version of this map.
We'll hold off on the bond matter.
And I can speak to that one as well.
All right.
This, this item is an action that the council has asked, asked staff to bring to you, and it involves the expansion of the, of the, I'm going to ask Mark Ruff, just to give me a nod, is it the, the TIF district or the Economic Development District, or both? It's the Development District. And so, the idea was to expand the Centennial Lakes Development District, so that it enabled the city to, to spend funds from that district in other parts of the city. And there are two proposals. There's an Alternative A and an Alternative B, that we need some, we need the council to either give us input on, or make a choice, one way or the other. Alternative A is the one that's on, on camera right now. An Alternative A includes an expansion of this district, so that it includes not only the Grand View area, but also potentially developing areas at 44th and France and 70th and Cahill, including the area on 62 for the Ped Bridge connection. So, those were kind of the key areas that are included in, in that, in that expansion.
And that would include Valley View, Wooddale, is that what you said, as well?
Where, where do you see that on the map? I'm not seeing the same areas.
70th and Cahill.
Okay.
Uh, Ped, uh, Ped Bridge.
Oh, it's not marked tonight.
It's not marked.
I see. You're just giving us instruction.
There's actually, there are circles on here, but they're very light colored. So, here's the Grand View, 44th and France, the Ped Bridge, 70th and Cahill. And a smaller version of it, which is a little, which is a little less aggressive, I'll say, really just takes the, the district and, and does not expand it quite as much, just covers, connects the Centennial Lakes area up to the Grand View area.
Do you think we needed to include 50th and France if we were potentially considering using TIF funding as a loan to?
Parking lot.
Do the parking ramps?
That would be an argument for Alternative A.
Well, is it spending or lending, or both?
Lending is what we discussed.
To not be, or Mr. Ruff that says it's cool.
Any, any use of those TIF funds. We're trying to define, define the Development District where we can use those TIF funds for any purpose.
Well, then, I would support including the 50th and France area at a minimum, and I don't know how you feel about the 44th and France area.
Admantly opposed.
Okay. But.
Didn't we also say the other Ped, I mean, the Ped Bridge, you're talking about to Strackauer Park, or, or to Cornelia Roslin Park? Because we talked about both of those areas as well.
The, the existing, if we were going to improve perhaps the existing Ped Bridge.
Right.
Right.
Both of those are on this plan?
I want to hear.
Both would be covered by, both would be covered by the geographic area that's, that is represented in, in the Alternative A.
Okay.
Can I ask for Member Bennett to let me know why she wants 44th and France? I missed, you were having a conversation with the mayor, and I would have, and I would like to, if you don't mind, ask you to repeat it, because.
Sure, I will, and I will.
I need to understand your, your point.
Yep.
I'm not against it or for it, I just need your input.
Okay, and I, sorry for the sidebar conversation.
No, that's okay.
Um, I, one of the ways I became involved in city issues is there was a very old development plan that was developed, I believe in 1980, when there was other legislative action with respect to TIF. And at that time, in order to, to, I think, qualify before the legislature changed the rules, or whatever the rules were at the time, develop, redevelopment plans were drawn up fairly hastily for 70th and Cahill, Valley View and Wooddale, and 44th and France. The plan for 44th and France would have replaced single-family homes with, on France Avenue, a parking lot. It would have replaced single-family homes on West 44th Street with a multiple-unit housing. And the, I believe that the plan was based on blight. That's one document that I've never seen, but I've seen most of the documents that were connected with it.
But those plans are gone now, so what's the danger? I can think of some advantage.
Of new development districts?
No.
Because a development district confers certain powers, including a power of eminent domain. Now, we have legislative action that limits that eminent domain for park redevelopment.
That's where we've limited it.
Well, it is, but, but it's that, it's that kind of action. I mean, I, I think that people understand, and I, and there's no limit on use of eminent domain for public purposes. If there's, if you need that kind of governmental action to build something like a school, a road, a parking lot, parking ramp. But in terms of the redevelopment of the neighborhood, it was one of the things that precipitated the formation of the Neighborhood Association. The Neighborhood Association did a lot of study and sharing of information in the neighborhood, and the neighborhood came to the city council in the summer of 2003, or 2004 with this, asking to be removed from the Development District, which was the action that the council took. The redevelopment plan dating to 1984, that area, was not removed from the comprehensive plan until we approved.
Okay.
The new comprehensive plan. So, once that development district was lifted, the neighborhood, the down, the, the commercial area redeveloped itself fairly quickly. There are still some buildings that you and I would possibly find not aesthetically pleasing as other buildings, but virtually all of them are occupied. There's one building on Sunnyside that's not. A lot of, so it's a vibrant.
I get the background worry.
Yep.
Is there anything that 44th and France would miss out on that potentially it could use in a positive way, that if we don't, yeah, thank you.
Well, I would just.
I'm actually asking these two, but you can chime in later, Member Bennett.
The only thing I would chime in to tell you is that you're not actually conferring any status on anything tonight. All you're doing is picking which one of, what areas you'd like to have additional conversation and public input on. So, you're not, you're not taking an action that confers any change of status or expands this district tonight. All we're doing is, we have to, we have to publish a map that allows the council then to have a public hearing to take public input, and that's, that's what the decision is tonight. So, you may well get to that very same conclusion as a whole council, that inclusion of that area is not of your interest, but you could also choose to just not include it in the conversation, not have any dialogue about it either.
Here, here's what I worry about. Because it, it's not conferring a, a development district status, it's just defining the geographic area where we could potentially spend TIF funds that are aggregating down in the Southdale District, or the Centennial Lakes District. That, there may be something that the merchants at 44th and France want to do, or we want to do a small area plan up there, because they want to have some redevelopment activity, or we want to look at whether it makes any sense to have some kind of parking behind for, I'll just say, behind Convention Grill back there, that empty lot. If we don't have that area included geographically, we might be limited in how we can, we can help that, that neighborhood do some things that might be TIF-related, after we go through a small area plan process, all of which will be driven by them. So, that's, that's the only thing I, I like, I like A, because it gives us a lot of flexibility on where we could potentially use these funds aggregating down in the southeast part of our town. That, that's, and I think that's all we're doing, is just looking at and designating areas where funds could be, potentially be expended.
Yeah, I don't know why you would preclude a certain area from a funding source, I mean, when it's on the Beltway that we're looking at, 50th, I mean, France, all the way down. We talked about that whole corridor.
It is a very, very small business district. It's much more extensive on the Minneapolis side. There are single, single family.
70th and Cahill is small, too, and that's minute.
No, single fam, no. 70th and Cahill is a completely different kind of business district than is 44th and France. You've got single-family homes that are the equivalent of two or three lots from France, at 44th and Sunnyside in France. You don't have the depth, you don't have the size of business district, and I think one of the things that the neighborhood is concerned about is preserving what has stood and worked so well, and not, not commercializing it, not over-intensifying it. There already is about 4,000 vehicles a day on 44th Street, and another 2,000 vehicles a day on Sunnyside Road. And so, there's plenty, there's a lot of traffic in the area, 14,000 vehicles a day on France Avenue, and redeveloped to what, and small area planned for what, and, again, it's not, it's not a commercial area, it's largely a residential neighborhood, very close to France.
I, I don't know why we would exclude any potential area of change from this, I just don't, I don't get that. I mean, we marked them, we marked them in the comp plan, so why wouldn't we allow funding for them as well? How it develops through the public process is a whole nother, another deal. I mean, and it would be anyhow, so we either allow, it's already marked and notified as a potential area of change. You have the small area plan process that has to be, that will drive redevelopment, and then on top of that, and, which is a, a resident intense process, and then once they get through with this vision, were they to get that far, we would then have one more funding source available as well, whether it's doing a low-density, throwback 44th and, and, and France that maintains the integrity of the neighborhood, or whether it's a, you know, a, a different model. Either way, the model needs funding.
There's a, for instance, can I just, there's a, behind Convention Grill, there's a garage that would be great if we owned it to put parking to get more off-street. Would that be something that TIF funding could buy, or would the city have the ability to do that outside of TIF? Because that's kind of what I was thinking of.
You mean, the small garage that's owned and holds, has held a succession of businesses?
Well, it might, but I just, I'm trying to give you an example that's not, you know, a park-and-ride that's three stories, because that's not what I'm envisioning. So, I'm just, I'm not trying to pick something that you can pick apart because someone's been successful there. I'm trying to, to, to give an example of, of what we might use that fund for, positive for the neighborhood. So, maybe, maybe I'm wrong, and we should just take it out, but I just, I'm kind of like, Joshua, I'm not looking at jamming something in there, I'm just offering them an opportunity.
Mary, any comment?
With what we're doing tonight, I think it would be wrong to exclude, I, I totally agree with what Josh said, to, to exclude an area that is a possible, even likely, area of change in the future. I think we limit ourselves greatly by not including that in this area. That's not saying we're going to do anything with it, and it's not saying we would use TIF funding for it, or economic development funding for it, but if we don't include it, then that just says we, we can't use, use this funding for that.
Well, it's definitely the conversation about whether this is going to become what we do, right?
Right, right. Exactly.
So, would we just want to have a conversation? Maybe ultimately it doesn't get included, I guess, if there's some fear for, for that, by that neighborhood?
Right.
But if you don't ever have the chance to talk about it, Member Bennett?
And some people might, I mean.
Again, my imagination is informed by my experience, and my experience with this has not been good.
I understand.
Nor has the experience of the neighborhood been good. And we talk about neighborhood identification and a task force for process, there is an active neighborhood association in Edina.
Well, then, they'll have an opportunity to, to talk about it, right?
Right, but, but I feel ambushed by seeing this in front of me tonight. I have not, I didn't know, when we talked about, when I carefully read through my packet, I didn't have any inkling that this was going to be in front of me this evening.
I, I apologize for, for that, for creating that presentation. We, I thought we had more time to work on this, we just actually, we handed this off to our GIS person who created the map today. The inclusion of that area really is nothing more than a, a, an opportunity to include it in a conversation. You may get, you may get to the point at that public hearing where you all agree it's not a good idea to include that, and you could take that action. It also provides staff the ability to formally inform the Neighborhood Association that this is under consideration, and if they have, if they have feelings about it, they should express those feelings to council. So, nothing more than that. You're not conferring any, you're not conferring any formal change or legal change on this area. You're merely putting together what the picture is going to look like that's included with the public hearing notice in the paper.
May I ask, if this, is the public hearing then on this proposal, or the other proposal, so that the alternative would be either expansion to that boundary, or nothing?
So, so the idea is, do we, do we put a some, a, a small picture, a small graphic in the, in the paper, and then potentially expand it, or a larger one, and then potentially contract it?
No, my question is, what is the purpose of the public hearing? What will the public hearing be considering, and what will be the outcome, possible, potential outcomes of a public hearing?
The, the public hearing is to consider the expansion of, of what you see on this map that's in a hatched area. That's the current size of that development district. And the public hearing is to consider, is to, is for you to have a chance to hear from members of the public, and staff, and anyone else, about whether or not you want to expand that district.
And so, that conversation isn't A or B. The conversation is either A, in its entirety, or less than.
Right.
Because you've notified everyone within that area, and the, or if we chose B, you haven't notified the people outside of it. So, it would seem, if you're going to have a better conversation, A would be a better place to start, because you would have had more people looking at it on their radar screen.
I believe that to be true.
So, wouldn't it be more transparent, talking about it with A, knowing that it can shrink down, because we don't want to talk about it as B, and expand it?
Right. I, I believe that's true.
How is notice given of the public hearing?
It's a general notice published in the paper, so there's not individual notice that's mailed to property owners?
A city extra?
Oh, sure, yeah. This is entirely at your discretion. It's, it's, this decision isn't what's going to be in and out, this decision is what's going to be involved in the conversation. So, the decision about what's included in the expansion, what's not included in the expansion is, is made appropriately after the chance for the public to provide you their input.
Understanding from Mark Ruff that we could not create a usage or spending district that was contiguous with the boundaries of the city, and we had to have some more contracted geographic territory to look at. I like the flexibility that's offered by Alternative A, at least for a discussion purpose, because it encompasses all those potential areas of change, which is what we talked. about a week or so ago.
Plus all of France.
And all of France Avenue, and I, I just think it gives us the, the, the best chance to have a real rich conversation about what this district ought to look like. Maybe it won't expand at all, but at least we have something to talk about here, and we have more to talk about with Alternative A, more options.
I concur.
All right, well, let's, let's take a motion on it. Move that, Mayor?
I shall.
Second, for A?
Second for Alternative...
Because we're calling this A right here, the larger map is A.
Alternative A, right at the bottom of the map.
Okay, oh, you're right, thank you.
It's, all right, further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of Alternative A for purposes of getting, giving notice to the public regarding the Centennial Lakes Tiff District discussion to be held on February 21, 2012, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay.
Nay. And I just want to qualify, that this may be something that during the process of study and public hearing, I see the value of in a way that I don't see it now, but as those of you have worked with me know, I appreciate the time to study and learn about something, and I don't feel like I had that in this instance, and so, it's not something that I feel comfortable supporting, even in terms of moving it forward at this time, because I've had that lack of ability to understand what it is that we're doing.
All right, and now, we've got a... Mayor, I take it you're going to handle this matter, too? Manager Neil.
I am, Your Honor. This item is, are, are, an item that was included in the council's consideration of the 2012 budget. It's included as, it was included as one of the components of the debt service restructuring. And this particular issue was the $950,000, it's an HRA bond refunding, and it, it requires an HRA action to proceed.
Further questions for Manager Neil on this refunding matter? Is there a motion?
Some moved.
Second.
Got a motion, and a second to adopt Resolution Number HRA 2012-1, authorizing redemption of certain maturities of public project revenue bonds, Series 2009A. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Carried. And that brings us to the end of our work this evening, January 3, 2012, 11:35.